I guess I psych. I'm calling the December, I don't know, 5th, School Board Meeting to Order. And we start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, we're going to take a moment of silence. Okay, thank you. And I move on to the next item, which is roll call of the board members. Do we have the roll? Okay. I, um, the next item on the agenda is approval of the proposed agenda. We are going to make one slight change to the proposed agenda, and that is 11.1, which is the Program of Study. We're going to move to right after 6.0, comments from members of the community, if that suits the board.
Yes.
Okay, so I would, you know, perhaps when we make a motion to approve the proposed agenda, we do it with that change. Do that now, please?
Yes, I move that we approve the agenda with the aforementioned change.
A second.
Okay, great. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Any opposed? Okay. So, the next item on the agenda is comments from members of the community. And I have Ms. Esposito as the first person.
Good evening. My name is Christina Esposito, and I live in the city, and I am one of the gifted resource teachers at Johnson. As you are probably aware, the division made a few changes this year and to the gifted program. I'd be lying if I didn't mention that last year was a pretty stressful one. But looking back, I'm not sure I would change a thing because the place we are is better than I could have imagined. Yesterday, I ran a Socratic seminar with a 4th grade class where they were comparing Walt Whitman's "I Hear America Singing" with Langston Hughes' "I Too Sing America." And our discussion was a small piece of what we've been doing in class. For the last few weeks, students have been analyzing the lyrics to Glory from the movie Selma. All students have been tasked with determining what different lyrics mean. Some kids were given ones that had easy references, and other kids were given ones that required more research. They've learned about Selma, Ferguson, Rosa Parks, Martin Luther King. They've listened to the mountaintop speech, and they've asked hard questions and learned that history isn't easy, and it very often isn't even really history. By the time we were done with their discussion yesterday, they had talked about slavery, the civil rights movement, the Central Park Five, the hate you give, just mercy, to loving versus Virginia, to police brutality, to Trump, to South Africa, to races as a social construct, to who they sit with at lunch. We talked about how poetry and literature allow them to learn about what was and what is, and to learn what's changed and what remains the same. They didn't want to stop and asked if they could continue despite the fact that they were headed to recess. And my goal is to try and hit them up at lunch tomorrow to finish the conversation. The lunch piece and who they sit with at lunch was particularly important to me because it's something I pointed out to them a couple of weeks ago when the 4th grade did an activity together. They assured me that I was wrong when I said black kids sit at one table and white kids sit at another. I popped in for lunch that day and sat down at each table and asked them to look around that day and really see who was sitting at their table. I wasn't wrong. Today, when someone said, "Well, we could fix it by someone just asking to sit at our table," it's possible I broke the rules of the Socratic seminar and jumped in and said they shouldn't assume someone should ask to sit at their table, but what, how they could change their behavior to fix what they believed is wrong. So, I get that there are people who are concerned that their child might not be challenged the way they were in the past. I'm going to push back against that because, for the most part, that's not what I'm seeing at Johnson. I'm seeing that more kids are being challenged and are more than rising to the occasion. It's more work for everybody, but I wouldn't change one thing about the things I've seen this year. The look of wonder when a kid begins to understand that reading is more than decoding and that much more is going on in literature and music than what's on the surface. The gasp when a kid understands exactly what it means to add in base five and how that relates to adding in base 10. The 110 million questions from students who see themselves reflected in my curriculum because I've designed it to ensure they do. The conversations I have with kids out in the hallway because they're frustrated and ready to give up, but I can tell them what they're really good at and how they can use what they're really good at to get better at the thing that's frustrating them. That I can tell them how my job is to know what they're good at. And I will just finish with one last thing. I have a picture of one student on my phone from a moment when she finally got something that had been really hard for her, and I was like, "See, I knew you could do it." And now I took a picture, and every time she tries to give up, I take my picture out, and she's like, "Yeah, I remember." So, thank you, and this is working.
We really could not ask for, um, thank you so much for sharing that. And we just really appreciate your strength and patience with us and keep on moving. That's a great story, so thank you for sharing that. You may.
Ms. Esposito, we just want to say thank you. Thank you for all of your work. Thank you for the passion that you have to deliver such outstanding lessons to all students. We appreciate it. And as we move forward, 10 years down the road, we'll look back on this moment just like the student looked back on her picture. So, thank you for what you're doing.
This is, uh, there's no other folks who've signed up for the public comment for this period, but apparently Ms. Saxton would like to come up and speak. But if you would like to speak after her, that would be appropriate as well. So, if you have three minutes, please state your name and address.
My name is Becca Saxton. My address is on file. I'm here tonight to talk to you a little bit about substitutes. It is probably the thing that I am getting the most phone calls about right now, not just here but across the area. I know there's a massive sub shortage, but I think the solution right now of having teachers give up their planning time and not paying them for that is not an acceptable long-term solution. And you have a sub-budget, and right now, you're saving that money on the backs of your teachers by putting them into a form of, I mean, yes, it's not technically mandatory, which is what I tell them. You can say no, but you need to think about whether or not saying no is a good idea every single time. But it's really disruptive to the type of deep planning and reflection that we need our teachers to be doing right now. And so, I would really encourage you to, and I know that for my own child who's here at the high school, that it's very disruptive that there are times when, while they're trying to track down somebody to cover a class, the teacher next door is trying to monitor both classes at the same time. And so, there's a lot, I think there's some wasted learning opportunities going on across the board at probably Walker, Buford, and the high school right now with that little bit of time that's being spent trying to track down somebody who can cover a class. And there's a sub-budget that's sitting there if you pay people something for their time, which keeps the heat on you all to figure out a solution long-term, but also gives the teachers at least some recognition that they're doing something outside of their regular contract time. I think it would go a long way to improve morale. I know Alamo County is in conversation about how they can do that, and they are looking at doing it after a certain number of times of subbing in a whatever period of time they decide that then they would begin to pay you. So, it's a way to make people feel at least that the sacrifice they're making is recognized as such. And I think it would make it easier to get people to be willing to step up and do it. So, it's something I would encourage you to do. If Alamo's doing it or planning to do it, I don't think that there's any sort of contractual concern about it. I know I used to get paid for subbing when I taught at Buford in the early 2000s, so it was possible then. I assume it's still possible now, and I would just encourage you to really consider that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Saxton. Would anybody else like to come up and speak during public comment? Okay, with that, I'm going to close public comment and move on to public comment for the 2020-2021 budget, um, which there will be plenty of opportunities in the future also to comment on the budget for next year. So, I just wanted to, but is anybody else would like to comment on the budget for next year? So, I'll close that public comment for the budget. And then, the next item on our agenda is going to be the 11.1, 2020-2021 Program of Study. Mr. Henderson?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Chairman Chair, Members of the Board, Dr. Atkins. Tonight, staff will present the Program of Study for 2020-
It's hard to say.
21. And that's a mouthful as we move into next year. We will start at Walker School with Dr. Hastings and move through the secondary schools and end with Ms. Carter at K-Tech.
Thank you, Mr. Henderson. Dr. Hastings?
Pardon me, no, please. Good evening, everyone. Oh, I'm sorry, I was a little close. Hey.
How are you? Welcome.
Dr. Atkins, it's great to see you, members of the board. I get to open us up tonight to talk to you about the 2021 Program of Study in Charlottesville City Schools. I'm going to begin with just a 512 perspective, a few points about some of the initiatives in which we've been engaged as we've been working on our Program of Study work. And it really is about the day-to-day work in which we're engaged right now. As you know, equity is the topic of the day. It's the thing that drives all of our discussions in our schools, and it really is the lens through which we examine course offerings, course leveling, course scheduling. It's hard to believe that we're thinking about August already. We're still trying to get through December, but the reality is this planning is well underway, and I think we're excited to present to you this Program of Study. As you know, our teachers have been working hard in the classroom each day, and differentiated instruction is the tool that we're using right now to meet the needs of all of our students. I get asked quite often, "What are we doing to train our teachers in differentiated instruction?" And we did do some extensive training this summer, and we do ongoing professional learning for our teachers in the school. But I think it's also important to remember that differentiated instruction isn't just a skill that we use in the classroom in the moment when we're teaching one topic. It really has to do with assessment, and it has to do with planning. It has to do with how I think about, the way in which I'm going to deliver my instruction, how I utilize formal, informal assessment data in order to plan my lessons, to really think through how we're going to deliver instruction. At a previous board meeting, you saw our plan for lesson planning in the school division, and if you look at that lesson planning document, you'll see that that document is designed for teachers to say, "How did my students do on previous assessments? And how am I going to plan my instruction accordingly for the groups of students based on that assessment data so that all of the students are able to meet or exceed the standard, but then also get the instruction that they need that's at their level?" Finally, I think you'll notice in the Program of Study today that we're going to address really expanding access to rigorous coursework for all students within grades 5 through 12. I'm going to take a second and just brag about Walker for a minute, if that's okay. You'll see on the next slide, I don't have any course recommendations, but I just had to take a minute to tell you about this. So, last year, as you know, we had a number of conversations around elective changes at Walker. And when I stood before you, I told you that I needed some changes with your permission because I needed to light my kids on fire at Walker. I have groups of students who are just not engaged in instruction because we haven't found the elective exploratory kinds of options to make them hook into school. I am so proud of the work that our team has done. I'm so proud of this group and giving us the ability to do the master schedule changes, the Program of Study changes, in order to really impact tons and tons of kids. And when you see the numbers up there, they're staggering. We went from 279 students taking art at Walker last year to 428 this year. But I think the most important one is, or perhaps the most telling one, is we go down to orchestra. I've been in the division on and off for over a decade, and as we've talked about fine arts, we've talked about how do we increase diversity in our music programs. And in one year at Walker, in one year at Walker, we were able to see a 78% increase in students of color accessing the orchestra program, that awesome, amazing fine arts program that we have in our building. And we've seen it all the way across the board. You didn't see as big of an increase in vocal music, but vocal music isn't that big of a program, but I'm happy to say that it's almost doubled in size this year. And then, finally, you'll note that to come to you last year and say we needed pre-engineering in our building, and then to tell you that I have 367 students in that program this year, and of that, 231 of those are students of color who are accessing engineering on track, in line with the work that is going on at Buford and CHS in preparation for great things as they pursue this next seven years of their educational career is just really awesome. So, thank you so much for the ability to make those changes. That opportunity to make system-level changes has really made a massive impact on the day-in, day-out life of kids at Walker.
Thank you for your vision on that. That was remarkable, and I really appreciate you having that vision, and the numbers certainly speak to how that has resonated with your students. So, thank you.
No changes.
All right, Dr. Atkins, would you like to say something?
I just want to echo what Ms. McKeever said. Thank you. Thank you for your vision. I know the planning took a lot. Thank you for embracing equity and making decisions based from an equity lens. Some of these initiatives we've attempted to accomplish for years. Go treat Ivory made the comment. She said at least 15 years or more that these initiatives have been around and probably more. And to see that you and your team, you've come in and really hit the ground running. Everything is not perfect, and that's not what we're saying. It is not. However, I think we would be doing you and your staff a disservice if we did not congratulate you and acknowledge the work that has been done and to tell you we are headed in the right direction. Thank you.
Thank you. No course changes for Walker. I recommend it. Thank you.
Okay. Dr. Turner?
All right. Well, good evening.
Good evening. Thank you.
First, I just want to say, this is, because this is the first chance I've had to be in front of the board.
Yes, thank you for coming.
I want to say thank you for letting me come back home.
Thank you for coming.
I'm really enjoying being back in Charlottesville. Every time I come in this, I see myself walking across here from 1985 to 1989, so...
Not much has changed.
Right. Just that the office was up there when I went to school here, yeah. But, yeah, I just want to say that. Thank you all. It's been, um, it's been great, so...
Thank you for being here.
Currently, right now, at Buford, we have no changes. I'm not recommending any changes. But, but because of our high school, the students have an opportunity to earn high school credit. I do want to make note that one of the things that Dr. I and I have been discussing is the whole issue with the GPA, okay? And currently, students who are enrolled in high school credit-bearing courses are not earning, um, points towards GPA, so...
Oh, they are. They... For next year. For next year, that's the proposal, right.
I'm speaking of next year. Yes, ma'am. That's the, that's the, that's the recommendation. And I'm not a high school principal now, so I'm not going to go too much into that. I'm going to let Dr. I take care of that part. But because I do help children earn or take high school credits, or courses for high school credits, I just want to make sure that I was clear. I didn't want to, I did not want to leave the board guessing on whether or not students will, could enroll in those courses.
Thank you.
Dr. Turner, I just want to be clear that students absolutely can enroll in the courses, and they can receive high school credit.
Right. It's the GPA.
But the GPA starts with courses earned at 9th grade.
Right, at 9th grade.
Starting 2021.
Absolutely. Yeah.
Which Dr. I will be much, uh, will explain to us.
And then, I'll come back.
Close that. Real quick, we just want to talk about, it is a, it is sort of a complex issue that we're grappling with right now. We have Buford students, we have city students that go to private school and then end up coming back their, their 9th grade year. So, what we really would want the board to take a look at is currently, right now, any high school credit that we offer, let's say at Buford, all of those classes right now are weighted at an honors level of 4.5, so we're giving a half a credit for those classes. Our private schools, there's a lot of range on the types of classes they offer, but schools like Peabody and Stab, all of the classes they offer are honors classes as well, and they're not bound by the Virginia standards of learning either. Currently, when those students come back to us as well, we keep those GPAs. So, a scenario, just kind of give it a scenario, so if Ned goes to Peabody and he comes back 9th grade year, he has, he has the ability to have up to a 4.5 GPA if he had all As in his classes. If Eric went to Buford, and let's say I was, again, if I took, you know, two or three high school credits and I got As, I'd have a 4.5 as well, starting my 9th grade year. If Leah was a student that really wanted to stretch herself and traditionally maybe has not taken some high school courses and, let's say, gets a, let's say, gets a C in Algebra I at Buford, she's going to start the school year, her high school career, with a 2.5 GPA compared to a 4.5. And, you know, Mr. Brown, you've been in the counseling realm, that is almost an impossible deficit for our students to make up.
I thought that was a voluntary thing, that you didn't actually have to take the high school credit.
Let's get credit in GPA. We're not arguing, the credits should count. The credits, you should get a verified credit, and even the grade can stay in your transcript. What we're talking about is discrepancy between the GPA calculations. So, what we do is, everyone is not starting from the same starting point when they get to high school. We had our counseling team speak to VCU admissions reps and UVA admissions reps. They do not look at middle school, high school credit at any sort during their admissions into colleges. But what it is doing, it is creating a large gap between student groups from resource students that sometimes can't access those courses early or have the funding to go to private school and then come back, compared to students that may have just arrived in this country that are stretching themselves, and they're doing well and they're working. Some of our students that maybe have traditionally struggled a bit, and then at Buford, they are stretching themselves, and we've got some great unleveling initiatives going on. And it does create a disparity before that student even steps foot into the high school. So, I would just, there are variations on how schools do it. Currently, any parent could come in and expunge that record if they, if they would like, but that does create another barrier. That parent would have to be aware of that, the parent would have to know, you know, to come in. And currently, you know, you can, it just, when we look at equity and we look at leveling and we look at systems that create different tracks for students, this is just another area that we've identified, looking through the Program of Study, how can we help more students? It is, it is, it's a barrier that we've created. I think the private school factor does factor in. It doesn't, we have so many private schools here, so that does play a piece as well. But that is something that we would let the board to consider moving forward, just are we, are we setting some students behind through really no, you know, really no fault of their own? The credit should carry, and a student who takes four high school credits, that is going to pay dividends for them their senior year. They're still going to reap the benefit from that by taking more electives, by being able to access some of her enrollment classes, UVA classes, wherever they want to go. It creates space in their schedule to take higher-level classes at the end of their high school career. Where a student who maybe just took one high school credit, that's great, that's going to benefit them, but, you know, they may not have flexibility in their schedule. But I would let the board to just consider the GPA, not the credits, but the GPA configuration, and is that impacting certain student, um, certain student groups in our Charlottesville system? That was just the tail end. He still has another slide. I just jumped in there to...
So, we'll just talk about that after, if that's okay with you.
Yeah, it was just up there, so I want to...
Yeah, great, thank you.
All right, thank you. So, although I don't have any changes that I'm recommending for next year, I thought it was important to talk about some of the areas to school that I see that are going well. I'm able to come in with a fresh, a fresh lens because I haven't been there, and I just think it's important for the board to see what the children are doing at the school. And the first thing is the unlevel courses. I had an opportunity to work through this when I was the principal at Monticello and at Alamo, so I've seen this work well, seeing the same thing at Buford. We have children who typically would, would not stretch themselves academically. They, they are doing so. Teachers are telling me what they see. Children have an increase in their confidence. They're working well together. One of, one of the things that I saw when I went into a room, just because I knew these children, some children who may be struggling academically are so eager and willing to work with a student who is not struggling, and they're helping each other. The other powerful piece is children who typically have not been seen as leaders because they may not have been in classes with certain children, they're birthing out. They're, 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 they're being perceived as young people who can also contribute, and I think that is, that is huge because now they're all together. And I saw that at the high school level, and I've seen it with younger students as well. So, I, also with my teachers, we're seeing that the unlevel courses are making a difference in social studies and science, and it was already happening in math, some before I got there. But I've paid a lot of attention to the social studies and science, so... And in terms of instruction, I just want to say, teachers, because of the differentiation, they're able to get around in the classroom and work with small groups more, which is powerful. And some of, some of the work that's being put into the lesson planning, especially in civics, we're, we're able to see some multi-tiered, higher-level lesson development. And that's something that some of the teachers have shared with me, that they, they weren't really able to unpack until the courses were unlevelled. So, I think that, that what we're seeing is just sort of a, we've been able to reimagine how to work with young people, and, and, and right now, it's working. So, I want, I want the board just, just to know that. And I also want to talk about Avid. I'm a, I'm a, I'm a big fan of Avid. And this year, I was looking through some numbers and talking to one of the Avid teachers, and we, we've had an increase in our 8th grade enrollment in Avid, which I think is, is, that's very positive because we're trying to help our young people see that they have a variety of pathways or can have a variety of pathways to be successful as adults. And, and, and Avid is one of those ways to make that happen. In fact, my children went to ODU today, so, you know, we're, we're trying to give them as much exposure as possible, and just to see the numbers go up is a big deal. The other piece is, one of the things that we've talked about a lot over the years wherever I work is that Avid strategies just shouldn't happen in the Avid classroom. When you're talking about teaching strategies, what we want, we want good teaching strategies all over the building, not, not just in a pocket, okay? So, I was able to, at the, at the, at the end of the summer, tweak some things with my master schedule, and I was able to make my head, my, my, my main Avid teacher, I was able to give her a, an extra free section to, to, to go into classrooms because some of my teachers need those examples. They, they need to see it be done, okay? So, one of the things that we're seeing happen, an increase, is throughout the building, we're seeing an increase in strategies like focus, note-taking, and relational capacity, especially in our science rooms. But, but, but one of the things I told the staff that, that I really embrace is that whole kind of, the teacher teach their colleagues because sometimes we just don't have the time to bring in people. We have other things that are going on, and we just want to make sure that wherever we can, we want to give our teachers meaningful, professional development, and something that they can use immediately. And we're, and we're seeing that it's making a difference. We're struggling in writing right now and with our writing skills, but, but we're going to get it. And, and one of the things that we're working on is that we're using Avid strategies to help with writing throughout the building. So, that's just one thing, but at least that, that the, the Avid program is, is, it's, it's a part of the school and not just in a silo. We're really trying to make it a part of what we do. And right now... And right now, many of my Avid students are engaged in a national contest, and they need to be exposed to that level of work too, and they're excited about it. So they're working on a podcast, and they're going to address some controversial topics in that podcast. But we just want them to see themselves as learners and scholars as much as we possibly can. And the last thing, as we know, the unlevelled courses, that's an example of working on the equity. But I also want to talk about what we're doing outside of the classroom. We really want to pour into our young people. And just because I'm from Charlottesville, I grew up off of Tecton Page. I personally know what some of my young people are going through. And it's very hard sometimes for many of our students, especially some of our students of color, to see a connection between doing well in school and what it means for the rest of their lives. And sometimes we can't get that message across in a content-based course. So one of the things that I am working on, I've been working with Dr. McDonald at UVA. The president of UVA has said yes to this, we're extremely excited. We want to have, and we're going to start it this year, but we want to keep it going and make it stronger next year, and I want the board to know about it. But we want to focus on our mentoring, and men of color, honor and ambition, and women of color, honor and ambition. We're going to start this year in January. Because one of the things that I want to do is, I want to put our children around people who they know are successful, they see as successful, and that maybe we can inspire them. I want to give our young people hope. I was fortunate when I was a student, because Mr. Bryant was a teacher at Walker when I was there. I had Kenny Leatherwood here, I had W.T. Lewis, Coach DeBerry. But many of our children don't get to see people who look like them be in very successful roles. And I want to change that, because I don't think we're going to inspire them as much as I want to inspire them just by telling them that history class is important. I have to bring some people in that can bring that to life. And we're excited about that work. I'm working with Ms. Johnson out of the central office. And we're getting ready to really try to set this on fire, in terms of making it a big deal, and pushing our young people to be extremely successful, and knowing that they can be successful. And I'm also looking to do something vertical with Dr. I, because MP3 has been here at the high school. But one of the things that has happened is that the older children have said, wow, to Dr. Paul Harris, I wish you would have worked with me when I was younger. So Dr. Harris got in touch with me, and I know Dr. Harris. And we're going to really address the black athlete. And we're going to mentor those students, the young men. One of the things that I ran across when I was a high school principal that would break my heart is the number of young people who did not, and their parents, who did not understand the NCAA clearinghouse. And when a child is in 11th grade and they find out that, man, oh, I can't be seen by this coach, I can't go to this college and play football because I was in basic English in the ninth grade. There's nothing more devastating for a child, because for some children, that's the way they can get to college. But when you don't understand that process, you can oftentimes write yourself out of that chance. I can't tell you how many high school or college coaches, and whenever I had a main, a main athlete, a big-time athlete, the running back coach would not come see me, it would be the guys you see on TV. They will come see me about that child. And we start to talk about their grades and what they're doing, and they say, they're doing what? I can't touch them. That's, our children have to get past that. And they need to start to understand what that means, and to be able to jump through those hoops when they're 12 and 13, because when they're 17, it's too late. So I'm really interested in continuing to work with Dr. I on that, Dr. Harris. But in terms of the equity that we're going to work on outside of the classroom, those are some of the things, because we just want to pour into our children and get them ready for the rest of their lives. So, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Dr. Turner.
Thank you so much.
It's really inspiring.
Exciting.
Hi, Dr. I.
Ms. Dahl cannot be here today, so Beaufort is not recommending any course changes. They're going to continue just to bolster and support the programs that already exist at Lugo McGinnis Academy. CHS, we're not recommending any new courses in the program of study either. We're going to continue to focus vertically with Walker and Beaufort and the Division on our equity efforts accessing, making sure students can access rigorous classes for all students. Again, through our unleveling initiatives as well, we're seeing a lot of positive growth with our students, both socially and academically. That includes our traditional honors option classes, and also our foundational honors classes, such as geography this year as well. Term one data looks incredible. And what we're starting to see is, again, to echo what Dr. Hastings and Dr. Turner said about students, some of these students have never been in the same classes before. Some of these students have never been told that, yeah, you know, you have the ability to do, to go deeper into the curriculum, to be engaged in exploration. And we're seeing students working together. We're seeing students really accessing rigorous curriculum coming up. Moral of geography, the project-based learning and project-based assessments, that's where the state's headed to. And we feel our teachers, because of the development we've had over the years, have really hit the ground running with geography this year, and with biology and geometry. Geometry was out, you know, plotting the trajectory of rockets the other day, when traditionally, geometry has been taught inside, you know, inside the four walls of the classroom. So really working with iSTEM and some of our other folks in the building, this has really been a positive experience for our students. The other addition will be CTE Engineering III will now be, we're not changing anything in that course, but it aligns very well with PVCC's, there's an associate's engineering program at PVCC right now, where they'll be able to get credit towards that class as well. So we're not changing anything on our end, but those students will be able to take that as a dual enrollment credit. And this is an opportunity for our students who may not be going into a four-year college right off the bat, but this is a high-demand area right now currently in our region. And even with an associate's degree, it's a very high-paying job coming right out of PVCC too. So we're still trying to build those gateways. Engineering III students can obviously continue all the way up to the capstone, and, you know, they're still going to MIT, but this does give them a dual enrollment credit from PVCC moving forward.
Thank you.
Do I have another slide? I'm sorry.
And so I guess K-Tech is next?
Yep.
Congratulations, Dr. I.
Everyone else, Brad, can I brag really quick on Avid? Sorry. I just want to say, you know, a lot of the unleveling initiatives and really raising the rigor in the classroom, it's a slow game, it's a marathon, it's really trying to identify where, what buttons do we need to push, and what do we need to adjust? But we're starting to really see the results right now with, and I'm just going to share some of our Avid numbers. Right now, 88% of our Avid seniors are in AP and dual enrollment classes, where we know that has been a sticking point for Charlottesville High School and Charlottesville City Schools. You know, traditionally, we have not seen minority enrollment in those AP and dual enrollment classes. That's really starting to increase. Right now, 11th graders, 65% of them are taking, and some of them are taking multiple AP dual enrollment classes. So we're really starting to see that. Right now, 85% of our Avid seniors have already been accepted to a four-year college. So, and we're not even, you know, it's not even the calendar year, we're not even in the second semester yet. So a lot of these efforts in talking to these students, talking to our student school board reps, we had a conversation with Ashlyn and our other school board reps, you know, about some of these honors options, and what they could have benefited for if some of these classes existed when they were in their ninth grade year. And we had some good dialogue, but we are really starting to see those results from our efforts, even though it's not going to be, you know, happen overnight, but we are starting to see that trend heading in a positive direction. So I do want to say thank you for all of your support with our equity initiatives, and to Dr. Atkins for her leadership on that, so, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. I. Great job.
Speaking of our student school board rep, that was a very good way to kind of segue. I know we have to, I mean, K-Tech is next, but I definitely feel remiss, because I have failed to introduce Ashlyn, who is our latest student school board rep. So thank you for being here tonight. She's going to be with us for three months, so, thanks. Okay, Ms. Carter?
Good evening, everybody. I'm happy to be here with you tonight to kind of review some, well, to review the changes in the program of study for K-Tech for next year. At K-Tech this year, for the upcoming year, we are really deeply focusing on leveraging the rigor and the embedded academics that right now exist in the courses that we offer. So it became pretty clear to me very quickly that if you are building a house, you are applying a ton of geometry. And it also became very, very clear to me very quickly that K-Tech is a place where, that is very equitable. All of our kids come, they all have access to the same things. We provide all uniforms, all equipment. So all of our kids, it's a great leveler. And this is a way for us to help provide our students that may have at times not understood where they were strong academically, see it with their hands, see it applied to real life. Because if you are not good at geometry and you try to build a house, it will not stand up, right? It will not stay standing. So we want our students to understand, really make the learning relevant. And we know how important that is for our students. And so we partnered with UVA, and we partnered with Jeff Priliman, who works in Alamo County, and it's been instrumental in building out Mesa. And they looked at our geometry and our electronics curriculum, and very quickly said, there is so much math, there is so much physics in our electricity course. So that's really where we want to focus our changes for next year, so that our students with additional supports and a built-out structured curriculum get their geometry credit while they're in building trades, and they get their physics and their algebra and functions and data analysis credit while they're in electricity. We will also do the same for Biology II, Anatomy and Physiology, and Veterinary Science and EMT. And English 11 and 12 will be embedded into Cosmetology. We have a couple of course name changes. We're going to change Professional Culinary Arts to Culinary Arts, and Electrical to Electricity, to mirror what the state calls the course. We are adding a salon assisting course. We want to really reduce, one of my goals at K-Tech is to reduce barriers, to make it a place where our students can come and can access the curriculum. And so we're adding salon assisting, so that some of our students that weren't able to access Cosmetology are able to come and learn some skills in the salon and get a connection to workplace. We're going to add Economics and Personal Finance as a way to remove a barrier, a schedule barrier. And the embedded courses that I mentioned will be added to our program of study as well. And so those are our big changes.
Thank you.
Questions?
I think we'll ask the questions in the totality, I think.
Thank you.
I see that the process is on the next page, page 13 or the last page. So if, it looks like in January is when things really heat up in the course selection process, so.
Would you like us to address them school by school? At Walker, we make, it's actually a really fun time in my life. The counselor and I go down to all of the elementary schools, we get to meet all of the fourth graders, and we bring along a bunch of instruments and fine arts teachers, and it's fun. It's actually, I think it's probably the three most fun workdays I have in the month of January. And it's just neat to see all the fourth graders who are going to be coming to us pretty soon. And then by February, we'll be well into elective selection. And as you know, at Walker, students only pick their elective classes, so it's a pretty small process.
Well, because the master schedule drives what you do in a school, one of the things that I want to do is improve the master schedule, and we're going to start this month in terms of communicating with parents. Then we're going to go, that's going to happen between now and January. We're going to get out to the schools between January and March because of the course requests. We want to make sure that the students are selecting the courses, because then that helps me determine how many sections I'm going to need to run of certain classes, and whether or not I can move some teachers around. And the goal for me is to have the master schedule done by the first of June. I don't know if I'll make it, but that's what I want. Because I want to make sure that our teachers know and understand exactly what they're supposed to be teaching when they come back in August. So, but my school councils will be working with the students, Walker and CHS, to make sure that our course requests are all done, and definitely children going up to the high school already. And when Dr. I starts to build his schedule, he will know how many numbers he will have in each class.
And our exam week will be the last week in December for students. So our teacher recommendations will start in January. Our community curriculum fairs will begin there as well, late January. And once those happen, our parent portals will open up, so families will be able to see what the recommendations were for each one of their, for their students' courses. February and March are the course selections, where the counselors meet individually with the students and work out their choices for next year. And then we're looking in April to wrap up our course selections. And obviously, from there, there's multiple adjustments with student schedules between now and August, but we're hoping to get most of the bulk done by April.
Our course selection happens at the base schools, so we're really, what we do is dictated by our base schools. But I did want to let you all know that we have, on the week of January 27th, we'll attend the lunchtime expo that CHS holds, as well as the curriculum night. And then the week of January, we will offer center tours. So traditionally, we welcome Beaufort, and we'll offer some opportunities to the high school for students to come and see K-Tech firsthand.
Ms. McKeever?
Ma'am.
I'd like to add that we'll be working with Denise Johnson and some of our other community partners to go out into the community to help our families engage in the course selection process, so that our families, we make sure that they have a voice. Eric?
And that was an addition. We have our standard curriculum fairs here at the high school. The community curriculum fairs are the ones that are actually happening at certain parts in our community, just to make sure that everyone has access and everyone's aware. It also allows our parents to ask some of those questions, and we go to them, so, thank you.
Thank you. So I would, I look forward to the discussion. I also am mindful of the time, so, but this is a super important topic, and one that drives the budget and everything that happens kind of in the next six months. So I want to make sure we're, we get a full discussion in. So to that end, I will, yes, so I'll let Mr. Mickey start. No pressure. Succinct, brief? More synonyms for brief?
We didn't get this presentation in advance, so I haven't had a chance to look through things in detail. Just listening to the presentation, when I was reminded about a discussion we had, I think at our retreat in the spring, that to sign up for AP courses, there were some situations where students needed to get permission from their parent or guidance. And we talked about, you know, we understand how, if the students, we want kids to succeed, and we want them to understand that this might be a challenge, and that was a purpose for that sort of procedure. But at the same time, we don't want to have any barriers to kids signing up for something they want to sign up for. And so I wonder where we are on that right now.
Yeah, we have not had, I believe you're referring to students taking one in five classes. What our counselors do, let them know, is that, you know, after five, that is, you know, we just let them know that that is a large caseload, you know, to take and make sure parents-
No, this was-
This was with respect to-
prerequisites.
Oh, prerequisites. Yes, so some of our AP classes that are sequential math or science classes do have certain prerequisites for them.
But would literally anybody be able to take Human Geography, for example, AP? Like anybody who was rising ninth grader? There'd be no prerequisites, for example?
No, most of our AP classes do not have prerequisites. The only ones that do will be- The only ones that do will be like a sequential, a sequential math.
It seemed like what we had heard about, and I don't know how, whether it was a thing or not, but what we heard about was that, not talking about prerequisites, that it was that, well, you know, your course of study and your grades in the past, we need to talk about this, and you need to get parental permission before you do it. It seemed like we heard about that.
We did.
Yeah.
We did. And some of the information that we got is that that conversation tends to steer students away from the AP courses. So, not having any of those prerequisites.
Yes.
Certainly providing the student with the support that's necessary to be successful, and guiding the student, but not letting that be a barrier for them getting into that class.
Exactly.
I think you brought it up.
Yeah, I think part of my recollection of that conversation was, again, around AP classes, which at some point, I hope to have a deeper dive and conversation about that again. But we all felt unanimously that what we definitely wanted to do was to remove any barrier, so that every student who walked in to sign up for an AP class would not be, you know.
Would there be no hesitation?
Right. Or it wouldn't be dependent on a teacher recommendation or anything else, so that we want everybody who, you know, wants to do that.
I mean, if there's a mandatory prerequisite, that's one thing.
Well, and I felt like that was kind of where we landed at this point, was definitely to remove all barriers.
Except for like those that are obviously sequential?
Absolutely.
Pre prerequisites?
And I think we're even looking, you know, with our counselors right now, teacher recommendations are just a part of, you know, all the information we look, we look at and we discuss with students. I think what we're looking at now with our counselors too is not, is for some of the students that maybe are reluctant to take AP classes, is to really encourage them to challenge themselves, and really look at what are their options, what are their choices post-secondary, and really steering them in that, you know, in that direction as well. So, we, you know, we're doing our best to eliminate all barriers to those classes, despite the ones that exist, you know, are sequential classes. So, we are, that is a focus of my counseling team and my admin team right now. Teacher recommendations are important, we're doing those, you know, in January, and teachers are working with the students that are in the classes, if they want to go to an AP class. What the teachers are doing, they're working with those students during that second semester to really prepare them. What they're doing is identifying areas that they're currently weak in, or areas for growth, to better prepare them. So, when they do take that AP, because what we don't want to do is just say, yeah, go ahead, and then knowing that they have some gaps there. So, what the teachers are doing in conjunction with the counselors is saying, all right, if Eric wants to take, you know, this AP class, what areas currently does he need to, you know, really brush up on or get stronger in to be more, to be more successful? Just really trying to work within the school year as well, so set the students up for success.
And I appreciate that, but I also felt like some of the conversation we had was, yes, it's important for the teachers to identify areas that they might be, you know, struggling in a little bit to get them better prepared, but the opportunity, if a student really has a desire to take a class, and even if they aren't necessarily prepared, but they're standing, you know, at your door and saying, I want to be in that class, that they should have that opportunity to be exposed to that curriculum, even if they do stumble a little bit. And that I feel like we all felt like we're not tied to the fact that they need to get that four, or whatever that, you know, best score is on the AP exam, but again, giving them the opportunity to be there and to sit there, and similar to the unleveled discussion, right?
Yeah, and I totally agree. AP classes, even though they're our most rigorous classes that we offer here, they're still high school classes taught by high school teachers, the high school students. So, it's our job as a school, and as teachers and coaches and everyone in the building to make sure that the teachers have the skills to teach the students, but to also make sure that those students, wherever they are, we can meet them where they are and get them with the work they need to be, or where they want, you know, where they want to be.
So, I just want to add, like, it's kind of like what Dr. Hastings has mentioned about, like, lighting the children on fire for this subject. It's like, one way that a class is taught versus another way a class is taught may just be the way the child needs to be engaged. And so, that's why I know as a board, we're really committed to ensuring access to those high-level classes, even though they, a student may not be obviously fit, you know, like the right fit. But it's like, well, maybe this is the subject that, that lights them on fire, makes them understand and have pieces come together in ways that they never had before. So, I think that's a really important question that Mr. Mickey brings up, and same with Ms. Torres. So, did you have any other questions, Mr. Mickey?
I guess I was curious, at K-Tech, is the Econ and Personal Finance, is that being done through online course? Is that how you're doing that?
No, we're going to use a, we're going to, we'll use a curriculum that's, that is built out in Schoology. That's what, that's what we have access to, and so, but it won't be an online course.
Schoology sounds fancy. What is that?
It's, it's a learning management system.
Okay. Okay, it's a canvas.
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Lingo.
So, that's, that's great, you're not needing to do for that, but I, but our online courses, the fact that they're out there, it does seem like a good opportunity for K-Tech to help people with scheduling, that they could do an online course.
Absolutely.
To help you, and hopefully guidance, counselors and people.
Also a super rigorous course. It's a pretty rigorous course, so it's helpful to have, I think, in-person.
Sure.
Opportunities.
I think that we, I think, obviously, obviously I have a background in virtual education, and those, those thoughts have, those thoughts are definitely in the forefront of my mind. And, but I think for me, what I'm really trying to do right now, before we open up kind of all of these options that we do well, I have had excellent advice from my mentors of Dr. Atkins and Dr. Haas, to not eat, try to eat the whole elephant in one bite. And so, we really feel strongly about getting these academic offerings that we are creating, that we're embedding really solid, with a good curriculum behind them, and get our teachers where they need to be, and then looking at how we can certainly include some virtual options into what we're doing. So, that's, it is, it is absolutely something I am highly considering, but for the future.
Can you talk a little bit more about how you're embedding the English and Cosmetology?
We are. We have an English teacher at K-Tech, and she has been working with our, with our Cosmetology teachers already, and she already pushes in quite a bit. But her, what she, what they're going to work on is building out a curriculum together that meets the English standards, but that focuses on Cosmetology topics and subjects. There's some, there's some standards that she'll have to directly address, but she, this is, it's part of our embedding academics initiative, she wants to, to use the English standards to build out, to build them out around Cosmetology specifically.
Well, so, will that end up counting as their English 11 and 12 class?
Yes.
And they'll take an SOL, or whatever?
Yes.
Wow.
And a certified, you have to have a certified teacher as a teacher of record and a teacher to teach the course. And so, we do, and she'll address the standards, but they will be focused on Cosmetology. And again, our sort of philosophy and train of thought around that is that this is something our students feel really passionate about, and that they love and enjoy. And when we can make it relevant, we know that when we can make, when we can make academics relevant, then that's when we really get to engage students. And so, that's our hope and our goal.
Cool.
Mr. Bryant?
Good evening, everyone, all the principals. Just have a few comments. Dr. Hastings, I'm really excited about the growth and changes in your Fine Arts program, especially orchestra, where there's more diversity. I'm hoping to see the vocal music program. Need any help in that, just call on me. Get those kids to sing. I'm real excited about that. Dr. Turner, I'm really excited about the mentoring piece. The courses I had no qualms with, the teachers are doing what they need to do so that our kids can be successful, but the mentoring piece is extremely important. I think that's going to take off under your leadership, so I'm excited about that, and I'm real proud of that. The Avid program, and I'm an avid lover, first generation, so working on those writing skills, getting those students, I was working my nephew on a paper last week, and, you know, it was interesting, and I had to kind of, you know, fix some things so that he would be in the right voice. So, that is, that is definitely needed. Lou McGinnis continues to working on the social emotional learning for those students, extremely important. Dr. I have one question. Yes, we are committed, as a former counselor, I was listening with keen ears. We are committed to all students having access to AP courses, but what are some mechanisms you have in place for those students who may not have ever taken an AP course? And once they're enrolled in that course and they're struggling, what are some things in place that is going to assist that student in being successful in completion of the course? Not putting so much emphasis on the AP test, because most colleges will accept four and five, fives to get the college credit, but to give them the opportunity to take an AP course, what are some things in place that's going to assist those students in being successful?
Yeah, we have multiple, yeah, multiple ways to tackle that. First thing, you know, it's really, the most proactive thing we can do is make sure teachers are really scaffolding, differentiating in the classroom the first time, making sure that that first instruction is sound. We did an AP boot camp this, this summer for students that were thinking about taking AP classes that are not taking them. We brought them in for a week, they worked with AP teachers on what to expect when they get to AP, and that was free of, free of charge for those students. They ended up coming on the summer school buses, so it ended up, we had a great turnout for that as well. And it's really getting the information out. We have some, our teachers work incredibly hard, and they stay long hours. It's really getting the information out to the parents and to the teacher, or to the students, that there are opportunities after school, before school, to really get that one-to-one or small group attention, and it may not be necessarily on the content, it may be how to take notes, and maybe, you know, the soft skills that sometimes our students stumble in. Our Avid program is now branching out, and they're doing PL for our teachers, because the Avid strategies, the WICR strategies are based on what's best for all students. And the focus of Avid is to get more students into these AP classes. So, the good thing is with Nicole right now, what we're doing is we're embedding that into our PL throughout the year as well, working with our teachers to make sure that we're talking with the students. And our counselors are looking at ways to get into the English classrooms early this year, and really work with those students, and really explain, you know, what will it take to be successful in AP, and then what are the resources there to help you get there if you don't feel you're there. So, it's not a complete, you know, we're still trying to piece it together, but we have some good initiatives happening right now to make sure that, once students are there, they're supported, and, and working with the counselors and that teacher to make sure that, even though they're in AP class and they start to stumble, it doesn't mean, hey, you need to go down a level. It means, all right, what can we do, you know, to get you to where you need to be? So, that's, that's been our focus with our counselors this year, our teachers, and a lot of that has come out of the Avid department as well.
And will this boot camp be an annual thing?
I hope so.
Great. Okay. Thank you. Ms. Carter?
Well, I'm excited about the changes at K-Tech as well.
Thank you.
I can remember being a counselor, working with students who wanted to go to K-Tech, and it was always a scheduling issue. They couldn't take this, they couldn't take that, and they wanted to go to K-Tech, but they wanted to take all these other courses. So, this is a great way of breaking down those barriers. So, I'm really excited about that and some of the changes. And I like the salon assisting, you know, to give those kids an opportunity, who want to take Cosmetology, but are not quite ready.
Right.
Giving them that experience. So, great changes, and adding a lot more courses. We couldn't do that at one time. Maybe it was the English and the math, but it was always a scheduling issue. So, I'm glad that's beginning to, to work itself out.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Dr. Kraft?
I first would like to just express my great appreciation for you guys, and I think we have an incredible, amazing leadership team in place. And, you know, just listening to you, your enthusiasm, your vision, your ability to work together is just awesome, and how you have embraced the, you know, our equity priority, I think, is wonderful, and I completely, fully support what you're doing there. So, I, you know, it's, it's just amazing to hear, and amazing to hear how some of this is coming to life, you know, and some of the changes that we're seeing. And it's just great. I'm really happy about the embedded courses at K-Tech, the academics. I think that's a terrific direction, and that also brings K-Tech to life for more students, and allows that to be a home base for them in a way that I think creates community, and will really, you know, will help them, you know, will help a wider pool of students there. So, I'm really happy. I wanted to just ask about one thing, or just mention one thing. You know, with any change, and we've mentioned this already, when we are putting equity front and center, and we're making these changes, it is, you know, it's, it's a big lift. There's, it's big, it's long-term, and, you know, we're doing, you know, I think we're doing tremendous work, and we're undertaking a lot. You know, what I think, one little piece of this, I think, there are some parents out there who I think are feeling some anxiety about this, and about, you know, just about some of the changes in relation to perhaps, you know, things being different than the way they were, and perhaps for their particular child, they feel like their child is not being challenged in the same way. And I've, you know, I've heard some of that. I'm wondering if you're, what you're hearing from parents, and just, you know, what are your thoughts about how to, how to, you know, talk to them and sort of what to do with that issue?
I'll go first. At the moment, I have not heard from any parents, they have not shared that with me, and neither have the students. They seem to be doing well.
I think that's a common thing that we refer our parents to when we are hearing concerns. We ask them to go to the principal, so that is something that I really do encourage our parents when, if you have some concerns, you know, obviously talk to your classroom teacher, and then talk to your building level administrator. Just really, they will be able to give you the kind of idea about what's happening, and address any of the concerns that you have. So, I appreciate you, that you haven't had that, but certainly if a Buford parent has some concerns, or wants to celebrate something. Certainly, Dr. Turner would be happy to hear.
And thank you for doing that, because I would talk about my children in Buford any day of the week. So, that's what I want. I would rather for them to call me instead of central office, because I don't want central officers to have to do any of my work, right? Unless the parents don't like what I say, then obviously they're going to go to my supervisor. But I would like to talk to them first.
Certainly.
We have heard that at Walker. We have a twice monthly coffee with the principal in the mornings. Pardon me?
That's remarkable. Like, I just saw this long list of things that you're doing to engage parents, and I was like.
Right, so twice a month, we invite parents to come in in the morning, and we spend an hour, and they're very frank, very open, very small conversations where we sit and talk about a day in the life at Walker. And, you know, when it's, when there are multiple parents in the room, we try not to talk about individual children too much. But I think we get into the nitty-gritty, and the reality is, we're in a people business. And I have somewhere near 87 adults working in my building, and each of those adults is somewhere along a continuum of professional expertise and their ability to provide differentiated instruction and rigorous instruction in their classrooms. We're really happy with the direction that we're going in, in terms of instruction, in terms of instructional rigor. Often, I find myself speaking with parents and saying, when we think about challenge in the classroom, we've often only thought about challenge in the classroom by doing more difficult coursework, because our classes haven't been diverse, and the place in which we differentiated was on the work that was, was in the work that we did in the classroom. And now, a lot of that work is happening in the relationships, it's happening in the community building. It's a different kind of challenge that's going on in our classroom. We had our Rising Fifth Grade Parent Information Night on Tuesday of this week, and one of the parents asked me bluntly, what's your sales pitch for sending children to Walker? Why shouldn't I send my child to a private school? And I said, well, quite frankly, that's an individual decision, all the decisions you make about kids are individual. Said, but if you believe in Charlottesville, and you believe in the future of our community, Walker is the first place in the city of Charlottesville where we ask 700 of our neighbors to get along. And it's essential that our children are together, and I would argue that in fifth and sixth grade, the academics are so important, but that real challenge of.
Come on down, Dr., Mr. Faust. That, here, can I, you can have one of ours, Mr. Mickey's.
Mr. Mickey's. At least his last official school board meeting, I mean.
We can share.
So it's, it's, it's the work that's in front of us about building community, about, about learning together as a community. We are working on instructional rigor. Four gifted, gifted specialists, gifted resource teachers in our building allows us to do some really, really cool things in the classroom. But it's work. It's, it's a, this isn't, as, as Ms. Carter said, we, we don't eat the whole elephant right now, right? We're taking it one bite at a time. And we're working on places in which we can increase instructional rigor. But it's not just instructional rigor. It's community-growing rigor. And that's, that's the real work that sits in front of us at Walker right now.
Well, that's such an important message to, to get out to the community, you know, and it, you know, I, it's, it is. And I think to keep saying it and keep saying it and keep explaining it and how it's happening at Walker, I think, I think really matters. So I appreciate that a lot.
Thank you.
Do you have any other?
Oh, Dr. I, did you want anybody else to address that concern?
I would just, sorry, I would, I would just, is it good? What do you want to say?
Go ahead.
We would love for you to brag about your parent engagement.
Whoever wants to address it.
Yeah, I would, yeah, I would just say if they have, I haven't heard a whole lot of, you know, parents have that contacted me necessarily about the, you know, the rigor in the classroom. A lot of that has to do with the fact that we've done a lot of these unleveping initiatives. You know, we've been doing these for a few years now. I would encourage parents, do reach out to us though, you know, if, if they have some concerns, reach out to us. The great thing about Charlottesville High School is that there are so many pathways for students to find their niche, whether that's, you know, a, a hard, you know, a lot of AP classes going, going in that direction, going over to K-Tech, our STEM, our Fine and Performing Arts. So the great thing about Charlottesville High School is we have a lot of options within our building for those students to find, find a home. So I would just encourage the parents to reach out to us.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Ms. McKeever, we did have some of the very similar growing pains when we started at the high school. And there was some anxiety amongst our parents and our community. And they stuck with us and we worked together to get us to where we are now. And we certainly can see the results in the performance of our students in a variety of ways.
Thank you. That's all. Ms. Perrier?
Mr. Faust, take a picture or a scan of the four individuals standing in front of me, please. I've been on the board for a little while and I've been taught that things happen from the top down. You have four individuals, parents, students, and all that are affiliated with the Charlottesville City Schools, who have made a decision that they love children and that they are committed to children. It has nothing to do with whether they have children of their own. But they want every child to be able to be productive, whether you're at a two-year institution, specialized training, we all need electricians and plumbers, whether you're going to be a university professor, or whether you're going to be in a school division. These four individuals are committed to every child that walks across their threshold to be the best that they can be in whatever they choose to be. When Adam sat next to me and left the school board, I was sad. You're where you need to be, Adam. When Dr. Turner would schlep around my residence, I never thought that he would be a principal. But you're, but you're a good one.
Schlep around.
When I met Dr. I, I will always remember, "Poppy, is it time to go?" And Poppy said, "No, not now." And then I met Stephanie. And tonight I learned that all those struggles I had in geometry were okay, but it's a good thing I decided I'm also going to build a house. But the house that I live in stands. So maybe I learned a little geometry. But each one of those individuals have made education relevant. It may be hard, it may be difficult, but it's relevant. I've been doing my job for a while. I haven't gotten that master schedule yet. I guess I need to go and hang out with Dr. Turner because I cannot get it. I need to go and spend some time in helping our students learn how to write. And I've always been a proponent of Avid, but we're going to pull out that Avid work and dust it off and we're going to start doing some of those strategies. But thanks to each of you for not only teaching me and helping me learn, but more importantly, helping the children to do what we will not be able to do when we're ninety-nine and a hundred.
Ms. Ray?
Thank you. It's kind of tough to go after that speech here. So I just had a couple of comments. I can't remember if it was Dr. Turner or Dr. I, did someone mention relational capacity in relation to science? I never heard those two put together. What does that mean?
Well, that's an AVID strategy. And basically it's about building relationships with students. Because what we've learned is that true learning doesn't occur unless there's a relationship between the child and, and the teacher. But that's the way it's been coined for AVID.
Oh, I thought it was a relationship with physics or something. I'm fine. I understand that.
It's occurring in science a lot in, in my building.
So I, I would like for the, the principals of Walker, Buford, and Charlottesville High School to, to help the public with us, with this scenario. Because I think this is where a lot of, where the concern from the article a year ago came from. Because no matter what color or what your income is, when you're young, you're, you're unsure what your future is going to be, or you may make changes. So if you're at Walker, fifth or sixth grade, you're going to be making decisions and things that's going to impact you when you're in high school as far as your coursework. Same thing when you're in ninth grade at Buford. And so what I'd like for you to tell us is that, how does that conversation go to that student if they come into the counselor's office and they are asking, "What classes do I take?" Knowing at that time, not knowing at that time whether they're going to go into college or trade school or whatever at that point. And how, how does that conversation go? How do you know which students to push to take that honors class or not? Or can you tell the public how that conversation would go?
This is easy for Walker because everyone takes the same thing. Except that at Walker, you get a chance to explore your passions through our elective courses. And so when we meet with students, we say, "Think about today. Just think about trying your best where you are right now." Because the decisions you make in fifth and sixth grade are just about building joy and positivity and confidence in your schooling and in your time at Walker. The decisions you make today, you could do orchestra for the next two years and never pick up a violin again. You could do pre-engineering for a year and realize, wait a minute, I don't want to do that anymore. And it's six, one and a half dozen of the other. What we want you to do is stretch your brain out. So go try things that make you feel uncomfortable. And if it's working, let's keep doing it. And if it's not working, let's try something else. All of our kids take the same coursework. There isn't an honors course to take. There isn't an advanced course to take. We all take fifth grade and we all take sixth grade and we differentiate, we, we take different courses in the elective environment.
So, and just a quick follow-up, what do you, what do you say to that parents that say, "Well, I want my son or daughter to take this class because by the time they get to the twelfth grade, I want them to be taking this certain math or whatever," you know?
What I said to the parents on Tuesday of this week at our, at our Rising Fifth Grade Parent Information Night was, "Live in the now, right now at Walker. There's plenty of time." The way that the Virginia Department of Education has structured diplomas is that conveniently you can obtain an advanced studies diploma in four years, starting with your freshman year of instruction. And we're going to prepare your student for success at Buford at, at, in all of their courses. But there isn't a course discussion, there's not a course differentiation that you're going to take here. Right now, it's just about building confidence and making that transition from gaining knowledge to applying knowledge in a skills-based format in our classrooms.
Thank you.
Let me start with saying this and then I'm going to go into what I say to parents. When I was a high school principal, I would have parents who would have a, a, a third grader and they would call me in my office and say, "Look, how, how can my child get to UVA?" You know, I'm sitting over at Albemarle or Monticello, like, and your son's in the third grade. Yes. Okay. So where I am now, because I'm working with seventh and eighth graders, is that it's about exploring. It's about passion learning. Yes, you have to take certain classes. But the conversations that I have with students now, it's, it's, it's all about looking at what are you interested in? What makes sense to you? And then my school counselors, which I have a very powerful team, they can help craft a schedule that makes sense for that child. But, but right now, the children need to, they need to explore and, and really get into their passion.
Thank you.
I too get phone calls from third grade parents about high school. It's really, at Charlottesville High School, we, we, that's, that's a difficult question to ask because every child's different. And really, that, that love for learning, that exploratory, it doesn't end at Buford. And all of a sudden, they get to high school and they know what they want to do. Our counselors really sit down. Some students know exactly what they want to do. I have some ninth graders that'll tell you, "I want to be X, Y, and Z, and here's how I'm going to get there." And some, some kids, I don't know. And that's okay too at the high school. What we're trying to do is, is bringing back that culture of high school not only being a place for academics, but also a, a fun place to be. We have so many clubs and we have so many extracurricular activities here that sometimes students get so mired down in taking eight AP classes, they, they, they miss a lot of the fun things. They miss that connection to high school. It's really all about that hook. We also have some students that, I'll be honest with you, but, you know, they're, at the end of their 10th grade year, they still haven't found that, that connection. And we're still working with them. And sometimes those connections or those hooks are outside of the walls of the classroom. Sometimes they're outside the walls of the school. It's what drives you? What's your passion? And then for us, it's our job to make sure, number one, you graduate. But number two, when you do graduate, that your options are open to pursue whatever that passion is. Whether that's the military, whether that's, you know, the trades, whether that's a four year, or that's in Ivy League, whether that's going right into the workforce, whatever that is, we just don't want any doors to be closed for any student that graduates high school. So really, sitting down with those students, mapping out what they want, input from, from the families, and really trying to, to, to plot a course and provide supports to make sure that when they graduate, there aren't no doors that are shut. And, you know, we're even doing a better job at following some of our seniors that graduate, that are still in the area, that graduated, and bringing them back and, you know, mentoring some of our students as well. So it's a complex question, but, you know, we are, you know, it's still, I think it's, they're just bigger kids. It's really still trying to find that passion and that hook and what, and what drives them.
Thank you.
That's a great point, Dr. I. Thank you for keeping your eye on that, that they're still children. Ms. Torres?
Thank you all for, for everything you do. Dr. Hastings, I just always appreciate your joy and your enthusiasm and your focus on the kids and, and really trying to, to guide them and parents into staying in the now. So, so thank you for that. I think all of our kids need more of that. Dr. Turner, I loved the fact that you looked at your master schedule and, and have your AVID lead pushing in. I've always felt like there's so many wonderful tools in AVID and have hoped and wanted that, you know, that that could happen. Because I think that could help a lot of our, our students, probably could help me as well. So thank you for that. I think that's great. Dr. I just had some questions for you. So thank you for everything that you're doing and all the supports as far as the unleveing and, and ongoing supports to the teachers as, as far as that's going. But I had a question and I guess this, I wanted to kind of circle back to equity and ta, and ask a little bit about scheduling. Probably know where I'm going with this, maybe. But just wanted to have a better understanding of, I mean, I see the timeframe as far as course selection, teacher recommendation, the students put in their recommendations for what they want for class. And then explain, if you can, to me and to everybody, what happens as far as how those classes get populated through Power School? And, and were there, I mean, there were glitches this year with some things. And so if you could just help, you know, describe that a little bit and then I have a follow-up, just a comment to that, please.
So once, I might have to, wasn't prepared for a technical question like that. No, it's fine. Once the classes are, are selected and students have their schedules, the master schedule is determined by the, the recommendation. So what we, what we, what drives our number of courses and our extra sections and our whole budget is how many students are, are signing up for those classes. So certain classes have to make, it has, you know, we, we work with those certain classes to make sure that they're above a certain threshold. But that's how, that's how our master schedule is driven. It's by the students that are opting into those classes. Now, sometimes when we look at those, the student choices in the end and we begin to, the master schedule begins to take place over the summer, that's how we create the number of sections. So sometimes if the students do make, if we have large amounts of students coming in, sometimes those do, they have to go on a, may have to go on a waiting list because the schedule is already created. So sometimes that does impact some of our students that are out of district and city kids that are coming back into the school system that didn't enroll or picked their classes early. As far as the-
So I guess my question or my concern or what I wanted to say here was just as far from an equity perspective, ensuring that kids who are requesting classes to be placed in a class, that, that they don't get bumped out of a class because, for example, they might have more flexibility in their schedule because other kids who want to take that class have more AP classes or only AP classes and they don't have the flexibility. So I really want to make sure it's important to me, and I am just speaking for me, that seniors who request to be in a certain class are not excluded or bumped out of a class because their schedule allowed it, you know? Or again, coming back to that AP piece and equity, so.
That we could-
I know. I just, I just think it's important and I just want to make sure that, that again, every child gets the opportunity to, to excel. And if they're requesting to be in a certain class, that hopefully we're doing everything we can to make that happen.
And what we're doing now is we're in that process right now where obviously Program of Studies is not official, but we're meeting with the counselors and the admin. We're looking back at what went well last year, what didn't. Every year, we're looking to, you know, how can we, how can we do a better job? So those comments, you know, we will make sure that those are in there and those, those scenarios are addressed within the process in which we, you know, schedules are, are created.
I appreciate that. Thank you. And then, Ms. Carter, I, I just am excited again, and I was really excited before when we heard the presentation at K-Tech. So I'm excited about the changes and the directions you're going, the fact that you're going to change some of those programs from one year to two year to allow students a little bit more time and then also embedding classes within that. I just, in my career work day, met somebody who had, was a K-Tech graduate as a CNA and she just loved the program. And so we started talking and I was sharing some of the changes that you were, you were presenting or hoping to make. And she was really excited for just, just going forward for the students that will be able to enjoy that. So thank you.
Ashlyn, you do not have to make any comments, but we are delighted if you have any input or thoughts on anything you've heard or what they've said.
I think regarding AP classes, a lot of students do underestimate AP classes, I feel like. AP classes are difficult in class. The note-taking is very different than what you'll take in honors and non-honors. It's also a lot of work outside of class, reading the textbook, doing your homework on your own, and making sure you're preparing yourself for the AP test because you're focusing on like six other classes. So focusing on the AP test is just another thing that's piled on. I think a lot of students do underestimate when they do make their schedule with how they- with how many AP classes they're taking, saying, "Oh, it's going to look good for colleges." But if you're not doing well in them, it brings your GPA down, and it just doesn't look well for colleges in the end. So I think AP classes are beneficial if you're ready to take on that workload. But I think a lot of students aren't prepared for what's actually in AP classes.
Thank you. Appreciate your comments. I'm still kind of confused about the GPA thing, so I appreciate your comments earlier about them. I, I guess, what, so what you're, so... Do you think, can you explain again to me the GPA thing? Because it feels like a significant change. And I just want to double-check I understand what it means. I understand the difference between credit and GPA. And I guess what I understood from when we started with this with Spanish at Walker, because like, obviously, we have, my understanding is we have high school credit classes at Walker with the Spanish one. Maybe we don't anymore. Maybe that's why we had the whole thing last year. It's all a blur. But we have the, so you have the high school credit starting very, you know, young. And if you get that credit, that GPA, even if you don't... I thought that there was a choice at some point along the way whether you get, whether that counts towards your GPA in high school or not.
Our current process right now is that if a, if a student would like, or a family would like to not count that class, say if a student did not do well, there's a form they fill out, they meet with the counselor in that classes, that middle school, high school. The high school class taken at middle school, that grade is, you know, is basically expunged. It's an expungement process. It's not a, I don't believe there's any choices before that, before they get to the ninth grade right now. So currently, our, if we just take Algebra I right now, Algebra I is considered an honors class at Beaufort. So what happens is, they get the credit for that class. When they get to the high school, that class is weighted because it's an honors class, is weighted at a 4.5 GPA. So that GPA does follow that student. The same thing right now with our private school students coming in. So any, when we look at those transcripts, a lot of our local private schools say that those classes are honors as well. So you do have a discrepancy with students coming up. And you will always have a discrepancy on how many high school credits they're taking. And that, I think the purpose of putting high school credits down in, well, now in middle school is to allow some more flexibility as those, as the students get to their senior year. GPA is solely used for colleges as a metric to judge high school, you know, high school performance and ability to perform well. So I guess my question would be, and what we were wanting the board to consider would be, with such a wide range of GPAs coming in their ninth grade year, some at zero, some if they've taken a class and maybe have not done well at a 2.5, our starting point for a lot of students GPA-wise is a vast, you know, is a wide range. It's very difficult, if you have a 4.5, if you do well, it's really hard to drop below. You know, your GPA is set at a 4.5 a lot of times, but conversely, it's very difficult for a student with a 2.5 to really make ground and cover any ground. So they could have the same exact high school performance, but at the end of the day, because they started behind, they will never catch up. Our colleges look at the rigor level of a high school. So our students are not judged against Western Alamo or Alamo High School. All of our students are judged against themselves when they look at the rigor metric. So what's happening is, since that GPA is part of that rigor metric, there are some students that may have just, you know, done well. They did, they gave it a shot down in, down in middle school, but they're starting with a lower GPA. And as they go through high school, even if they catch on and they do well, some of our ESL students that really, really get it and they excel quickly because of that, because of that middle school to high school GPA difference, sometimes that's a harder thing at their senior year to overcome.
But why wouldn't we be advising them to do the expungement of that? So that it's not affecting, like, that seems like a much less burdensome thing for a student. Like, why wouldn't you just, I mean, if you have 4.5... I'm just, I feel like this is the first and only time I'm going to be able to talk about this, so I'm just trying to, saying out loud and trying to brainstorm why this way, rather than like another way. I mean, if you have a 2.5 and you're a guidance counselor and you're like, "Oh, you, we need to expunge that because that's the point of taking it, because we want to encourage children to explore." But if they get a 4.5, then we want that to count for them. So why wouldn't we do that?
So I want to make a comment. One of the, all of the discussions that we've had about equity and using a lens of equity in order to help us to examine practices and policies is that creating an environment in which we diminish those opportunities for students to be perceived as not as good as another student. Or for comparison of students where their performance is concerned. Because the reality is, all of our students didn't start at the same place. They started at different places. Not moving that GPA only, credit absolutely, rigor is there, the credit is there. But by having a start time for all students when the GPA will actually be starting to be calculated, puts all of our students at the same mark for calculation of a GPA. It doesn't give one student an advantage because they literally started off, perhaps in elementary school, at a different place. So therefore, by the time they get to middle school, they can take all of those courses, and they are, or they're coming from a private school. This lens of equity helps us to level playing grounds while not punishing a student. It's just we're setting a mark where all calculation will start for students in high school because that's what colleges are looking at. High school GPA, not middle school GPA.
And I do want to be clear, the expungement, it's not just the GPA. That class is expunged from their transcript, so.
Okay, so that's just my understanding of our Spanish I thing, though, that, I mean, that we started back in fifth grade, you know, sixth grade, is like, hey, if you didn't want to have the, you would still get the credit for taking the course, but you wouldn't necessarily have to have that GPA against your high school GPA. I think it's a problem I have is it assumes that children will do poorly when they could be, excel. And it's like, well, if you get a really good GPA in your, you know, in your, that Algebra I class that you decided to push yourself to take, which I think I, then why wouldn't you give them the credit for that?
We are getting the credit for it.
I'm sorry, why wouldn't you give them the GPA for that?
Because if you, oh, I'm sorry. Because if you hearken back to the example that Dr. Irazari gave, Ned, James, and I all take the same class at Beaufort. We all get one credit for the class. But my grade garnered me a 4.5. James's grade garnered him a 3.0. And Ned's grade garnered him a 3.5.
I think it was a 2.5.
Oh, sorry, 2.5. So that means that when we all come to Charlottesville High School, each one of us has three credits, but one of us has a GPA of a 2.5, one of us has a GPA of a 3.0, and one of us has a GPA of a 4.5. To make up those two points is a barrier.
Right. But why wouldn't you just say, as a guidance counselor, looking at that transcript, you know what, you're going to get the credit for that, but we're going to take away, like, we're not going to wait that, and we're not going to have that GPA affect your high school GPA?
And that's what they're saying, by eliminating the GPA, keep the credit.
All of the students, though, rather than just the one student who would really be affected.
We're going to say, all three children will get the credits. But when we go across the threshold on Melbourne Road, everybody has the same GPA, and we work up from there. That's what we're saying, which makes it level.
The notion is that you'd do that for private school, too, that everybody would come in with a zero?
I think it's another way of leveling the playing field. At various points, I think, you know, we have to do things differently and look at things differently. And, I mean, if these, you know, if colleges aren't looking at these middle school grades, then why would we, you know, why would we do that? Why would we continue to do that?
That makes perfect sense. Yeah, I mean, that is, I mean, I think nobody wants any child to be, you know, starting at a 2.5 with their GPA. That we haven't done this sooner is problematic, right?
Then the GPA is a quantitative way to measure the rigor of a high school schedule for college admissions. It never really was designed to go down to an elementary school. Really, the student will still have the grade, the student will still have the credit, and when they get to high school, if they've taken those classes and they've done well, if they haven't done well, that will still have a very positive impact, you know, if they've taken a lot of those classes. They're still going to get the benefit, and I think that was the intent of putting some of these high school classes down at the middle school level. I think what we're, or what I would like to propose or discuss is, with so many variance in that, and so many ninth grade students starting at different levels for something that really wasn't designed to measure what it's doing at this point, that really, really the GPA at the high school should be from ninth grade to 12th grade because that's what colleges look at. Right now, we have some kids that are just, are coming in, you know, with a, again, I would say a 4.5 or 4.0, and some kids coming in with a 2.5. And even some of those private schools aren't necessarily aligned with the Virginia standards of learning either. So it's not like they're coming in, it's not like all of our kids are coming in internally either. So I guess that was the reason for that.
It frees everybody up, frankly, to just take the class and enjoy the class and enjoy learning and not worry about the grade at the end so much, while you're in middle school.
And still get the high school credit, which will benefit them later in their high school careers.
I think I like it.
So, thank you for exploring that topic with me. I think of such a major change is something that we, as a community, need to discuss and not just, you know, say, "Okay." So, thank you for that discussion. I appreciate your, you know, input on that.
Thank you.
So other than that, that, since there are very limited changes, and I think I've, I really want to encourage the high schools specifically, but also Beaufort, to really talk to parents. But I have literally never, never been to a curriculum fair. It's never been something that I'm able to get to. As somebody, as a parent who wants to go and wants to be engaged in their parents', in their child's education, I have two children in high school, literally never been able to go. I do not think that the way that we're currently asking our students and parents to engage with their selection process is working as somebody who's never been able to have those discussions with, like, a guidance counselor or anybody at the school. So I worry if I'm not having these discussions, who else is not having these discussions? And so I just really encourage, I think Mr. Bryant has suggested in the past, you know, guidance counselors sitting down specifically with parents, making sure that if somebody's, like, that people are not falling through the cracks. I cannot emphasize enough, like, how important course selection can be for a child, not because of their future, but because of their now, like, their present, like, being able to really explore. And, for example, one of my children wants to, he's like, "Well, I really would love to go and like learn about cars at K-Tech." And I'm like, you know, I'm on the board of K-Tech. I'm like, "I wonder if he could do that." Like, you know, and it's like, well, if I'm having these questions, imagine another parent and another child. And I just think we assume that parents know all this stuff because we've given them stuff. Let me tell you, I am overloaded. I have too much on my plate to kind of weed through. And even when I look very closely at the selection court that he made, I can't really understand in context whether this is, this is really what they want or whether there's something else that they could be doing. And so I just feel like guidance counselors, working more closely with parents and students and not just relying on the teacher recommendations are a way that I, a path forward that I would really like to see our division take. So with that, I will, go ahead. Dr. Atkins?
Thank you. I also want to echo our gratitude towards this amazing group of four here. And the collaboration that took place, I know that you met numerous times and you had an abundance of conversation about the courses and the sequence of the courses and the articulation from one level to another, making sure that we're providing adequately for the students. And I echo Ms. McKeever, how we communicate this is going to be critical to the success of each student. So I applaud each one of you on your creativity and on your absolute dedication to each student in your building and how you provide for them. Let's continue these courageous conversations and making decisions that are in the best interest of all of our students as we develop master schedules and as we place students in their courses. So thank you, I thank you abundantly for all you're doing.
Thank you guys for spending so much time. I just wanted to also say one more thing, the one more change I'm going to make to this agenda, if the board willing, is to move 8.0, since we already have an opportunity at the end of the agenda to make comments. If there are comments, yeah, I think we should move that to the end of the agenda and just put them both together, if that's okay with the board. So at this time, we're going to do educational highlights. Again, it feels really weird to be doing this right now, so thank you for staying. And we're going to talk about the City School Yard Garden. So, Ms. Powell?
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Atkins. This evening, we have with us the Executive Director for the City School Yard Garden Program, Jeanette Abinater. And she will be sharing with us an update on the City School Yard Garden Program and discussing all the many educational highlights from the program. So, thanks for being with us.
Should we go ahead? Yeah, okay. Thank you very much for having us and for our volunteers. Yeah. So we wanted to start by sharing some sweet potatoes. Our team came, and anyone who's here, please help yourself. This is from today's Harvest of the Month. As Ms. Powell said, I'm Jeanette Abinater, and two of our... So we have plenty for the people that are here participating in the audience as well. Today was Harvest of the Month. I'm going to pass it over from the start to our former Board Chair, Eileen Carey. Eileen, myself, and so will Bea Pierre, who's one of our board members, will be giving a presentation tonight. And Eileen's going to start.
Hello there. As Jeanette mentioned, my name is Eileen Carey, and I've just finished my second term with City School Yard Garden, my final term, and exiting as the Chair of CSG. So over the years, I have much appreciated working with you all, working with the city schools, and inviting us to come and talk to you and give you sweet potatoes, but also an update on what's going on. What's really been happening over the years from before I got on the board is a change or a growth to CSG becoming a collaborative community approach to building equity, leadership, and food security for youth and their families facing economic challenges. So where we are right now... Right now, we are so excited that we are embarking on celebrating 10 years in the garden, a decade in the garden. So this is a great time for us to be here and to have the opportunity to give you an update. We only have a little bit of time to chat with you, so it's going to be difficult to give you a full picture, but what we want to discuss is to be able to paint a picture of our shared engagement with you all over the last 10 years, explore the resources that we need to keep growing, look at the high-level numbers, review our impacts, and speak to some of our immediate as well as long-term goals. So if you look at what's been made possible in the last 10 years, we have eight schoolyard gardens now, and I know Dr. Atkins stepped out for a moment, but she was instrumental in the growth of this program in saying, "Once we started at Beaufort, listen, all of the elementary schools..." the elementary schools need to have gardens, and they need to have them at the same time right now. So here we are with eight schoolyard gardens. We estimate over 260,000 youth garden interactions, as well as over 4,200 students in the garden. The investment that CSG, City School Yard Garden, has put into Charlottesville City Schools is almost $2.5 million over a decade. And Charlottesville City Schools have countered with about 9%, so over $200,000 that they have supported us with, as well as other partnerships, the land, and things like that. So we want to continue that partnership and, of course, grow the investment as well. If you can't see this quote, it says, "A garden requires patient labor and attention. Plants do not grow merely to fulfill good intentions. They thrive because someone cared enough to help them grow. The garden is the classroom in which engagement sparks learning." And I think if any of you were paying deep attention to not what, not only what the principals just shared, but also what the school board members had to say about those principles, "Students thrive because someone cared enough to help them grow." So this program, City School Yard Garden, and what we're doing, is not just about plants. It's not just about growing plants. It's about growing students and growing positively contributing and happy members of society. That's what we've been doing for a decade. So we have four organizational pillars: hands-on learning, healthy living skills, youth leadership, and food justice. So the first three are up there right now: hands-on learning, healthy living skills, youth leadership. And each of the quotes speaks a little bit to the experience of participants in those different areas. That picture on the right is one of my favorite pictures. I love her holding that tomato. So each of the first three impact pillars is grounded in a desire to practice equity and justice in our work, and we are also working to utilize the gardens as a tool to build equity, belonging, and voice for Charlottesville youth. Because of that desire, we've also launched the Charlottesville Food Justice Network, which is a collaboration with not only City School Yard Garden, but other local organizations as well, to amplify impact. And Jeanette's going to tell you a little bit more about that in a moment. So, questions about what are we actually doing? What does this look like? For some examples of hands-on learning, one of the first principles, recently, the second graders did a unit on weather that aligned with their SOLs. On their healthy living skills, you've got that list there, and now you have your sweet potatoes. As Jeanette mentioned, today was Harvest of the Month with sweet potatoes, and the students loved them. They'll be cooking them in the garden in the weeks ahead as well. For youth leadership, Buford Garden Aid classes went to the Urban Agricultural Collective of Charlottesville's Friendship Court Farm to dig up perennials before redevelopment occurs in that neighborhood, so that those perennials can be transplanted in the school gardens. So an important tie between the schools and the community there. And of course, as we said, that fourth pillar for us is justice. And you heard back in August, I think it was, the youth interns, excuse me, and community advocates were able to come and speak to you about their work and shared the food justice cards that we developed along in conjunction with them. And then the last slide that I'll share with you is a little throwback for me, back to my teaching days when I was also a high school teacher. This is our, a core piece of our work over the last 10 years, and it's this development of our Roots Educational Framework, which is rooted in using every experience in the garden to build equity, experience, learning, and leadership across the learning areas. So Vera's going to tell you just a little bit more about what happens to make all of this work.
Good evening.
Hi, welcome.
Thanks for having us. Again, my name is Sobere Pierre, and I'm a board member, I think it's been three years. But definitely excited to be a board member and to have the opportunity to speak in front of you guys. As Aline said, I'm going to go into just the fact that we've been around for 10 years and what that means as far as how the work has been received by the community, by the schools, by the teachers, you know, everybody who's involved in the education of our, of all of our kids. We essentially grew from one garden to eight garden, eight gardens. And with that, also just understanding the resources that it takes to make those things happen, whether it be maintaining the physical gardens, the funding behind it, as far as, like, fundraising, and also just what's needed for the support of our organization. So we have, if you look here, we have 23 individuals that make up the team. Those first four kind of comprise of how that's broken down. And that includes eight staff and seven interns. And the budget that we have for fiscal year 2019 is $480,000, and I know Aline had Well, hold on. And if you look down, like, again, as far as, like, what it takes, again, is like the partnership with the school district, and also just, again, going back to, like, the infrastructure, what it takes for us to be able to implement and manage with the infrastructure that's needed. And you can see here the 2,235 volunteer hours, and also the local businesses, the number of local businesses that also support the efforts that we're putting, that we're putting out. So here is a, I guess, anecdotal example of what it looks like. And so, on a monthly basis, we'll have about 12 to 20 volunteers, and I'll skip through a little bit. But you can just kind of see, like, the Farm to School Week, where we have $2,000 for fresh chicken thighs. And I guess that's what we're looking at for fiscal year 20.
And that's about, like, Harvest of the Month specifically?
Okay, and yes, and that's specifically for Harvest of the Month. So, myself, as a board member, the reason that I'm engaged with what we're doing is because, well, my background is in STEM. I understand the value of the sciences, and I can appreciate what the garden provides. And so it's an opportunity from, for students to be able to get out and kind of engage in something that they may not normally get to do at home or wherever. And they get to see where their food comes from, the process of planting and nurturing and growing, and just kind of going through that whole process, and also understanding nature, right, and the science behind it, whether it's, you know, the watering of the seeds and allowing that to grow, and then photosynthesis, you know, with the sun. And so, like, all of that is valuable. And then for the students who are excited about the fact that they get to walk around and be in a relaxed space, some of the examples that we've gotten in the past from students who have had a chance to take part. And so, again, just reemphasizing that the past 10 years, you know, to still be here is, is an ode, or is a evidence of the value that we've been able to bring, and also evidence that everybody is on board and we're moving in the right direction. So I think that's it for me. One last thing. So, the other thing that I like is the fact that it not only touches the kids now, but it's also an opportunity for them to adopt some long-life-term skills, and just to be able to, you know, know about foods that are healthy, and also be able to hopefully try them and maybe like them, and hopefully eat them not only now, but also later in life. So healthier lifestyles as well. Thank you.
So Vera didn't tell you that he is one of the co-owners of Pearl Island Cafe?
Nice.
So he knows about healthy, good food and how to make it appealing. I think this slide is really important, the fact that we have this amazing board. Each year, we have 15 board members who donate anywhere from seven to 20 hours a month to the school, and even though you may not know them or see them, they're really advocating on behalf of the school district. So thank you both. I'm going to speak a little bit to program impacts. I know you all have seen our evaluation report and some of these numbers, and it is challenging to measure the whole breadth of impact that we've had, but the way that we do it is just to kind of present some of the numbers of the outputs that we do. So on these next two slides, this is each year. We have about 33,000 student interactions, and what that means is that each time a student comes to the garden is like the best unit that we're able to measure in terms of how often youth are engaged. So I know that school has other programs that engage youth in nature through the study over at the camp and through other programs. This is a daily, very frequent thing that students are exposed to, and so we're excited about that. 95% of the youth that we are able to evaluate have at least three positive development traits that they have advanced in: connection, competence, character, confidence, happiness. These are all things that the Curry School of Education has defined, that they see students are gaining in the garden when they're working with us. Each year, we distribute about 25,000 Harvest of the Month snacks. Today, it was sweet potatoes, and that program has grown over the past five years to not only be snacks that volunteers come in and prep and then hand out, but they're also on the line now. Mr. Jones is preparing the food on the cafeteria line, so the student who goes through the line can get sweet potatoes there. Our team is handing them out in the cafeteria, and then for the rest of that month, they're doing cooking lessons in the garden. We have these mobile kitchen units, and we'll be cooking them in the garden as well. So that program has developed over the five years. And then what we find is that students who try, I think one of you already mentioned this, they're willing to, once they get introduced to a new food, 80% of the students are willing to try that again. Some of these other statistics on the next slide, you know about the spring seedling program and how the youth at the middle school grow over 9,000 transplants and donate them to organizations around the community, and so it's really exciting. I'll get a note from a parent that says, "We're growing Matt's cherry tomatoes from the garden," and to think that the students' work is impacted across the city and county is impressive. Students earn community service hours, and then the students that were measured, over 94% of them gained competence in whatever skill they were learning, and then the parent and teacher surveys that we've done, this expresses the support for the gardens. So that's a quick overview of some of the numbers. As Dr. Turner mentioned earlier, one of the things we've found with our work is that mentors, the evaluators that have looked at our program, said the most important thing that makes the difference is having that relationship with the student. And so we've invested in a robust staff. Shannon Gaffey's here, I'll talk a little bit more about her position. Jordan Johnson, can you raise? Is the person who coordinates the Harvest of the Month program, as well as many other, and Mackenzie Morgan is one of our garden educators at the elementary school. So we have 12 full-time staff that are invested in this program for the school. Next slide. So then, looking at the numbers a little bit, this is how our budget is broken down. So 66% of our budget goes into staff compensation, because we are really about teaching and being there, building that relationship with the youth. And then you'll just see the other numbers there. I thought that might just be interesting for you to have a sense of where the money goes. It's a big investment to start a garden, but then, once the gardens are there, it does take a lot of time and energy to upkeep them, but it's not as much of an expense. It's more in the staff. And then the next slide shows where the funding comes from. So, right now, the large blue bit is all foundation funding, so 47% of our funding comes from foundations and then government grants. So we're really unproportionate in the amount of funding that we get from grants. We're over, heavily relied on grants, and we're trying to shift that. Most nonprofits should be at over 50% from individual and bonus. That's usually the most robust, sustainable way of maintaining funding. But because this, because of the nature of this work, that's been hard for us to do. Next slide. Talks about, so that's just some of the impacts and our numbers. And then a little bit about where we're growing in 2020 for our 10th year. We're working with Dr. Turner and folks at the human resource level, Dr. Clewens, to integrate the Buford Garden Educated Position into the school, so that those classes can be credited classes and can be part of the school curriculum. One of the things Dr. Turner is really interested in is this GPA issue, so that if we were able to have a high school credited course for gardening that tied to the many courses that are, there are six courses now that are offered here at the high school, that would give students an opportunity to get credit and a GPA rating through the garden program. So it would provide opportunities for other students who have different interests. We're also working on the Healthy School Meals piece. Would you mind handing those out? And as Aline mentioned, we'll talk a little bit about the Charlottesville Food Justice Network, but I believe I sent this to you electronically, but we made copies of the chapter that was, we worked with city council to pull together a plan that talked about food equity in our city, and we worked with hundreds of community participants and identified-- she got one. I need it, yes. Juan gave her his. Sorry, participants to develop this chapter. So this creates a plan for how we can transition the school meals into more fresh-from-scratch, how we can increase student participation, and we've been working with Mr. Carlton to raise funds to implement this plan. If you'll, if you turn to the back page of it, one of the core things are that fresh-from-scratch, healthy, free, and accessible food is what is our long-term goal towards food equity for Charlottesville City School students. So in 10 years, it would be wonderful to be able to come back here and to say that Charlottesville City Schools are a district that invests in students' health and equity, gives them the tools that they need to robustly do their programs through healthy food that is accessible to all of the students. So that's one really specific piece. Living Pathways and Climate Mitigation. We're working to make the gardens even more environmentally sustainable, putting green pathways down, even though it might take a little bit more extra care, it would help with climate mitigation, and doing lots of studies around that. Focusing on our gear lessons that Sobere, or that Aline showed with the rainbow with our Roots Educational Framework, and investing in full-time garden coordinators. So when we started, many of you, Mr. Henderson, will remember that our garden coordinators were volunteers. They were parents who had a student at the school, and over the years, we've worked to stabilize those positions. And at first, they were six hours a week, and then they were, you know, it's grown through the years, and we really, in working with our staff, realized they needed to be full-time physicians. So right now, for example, Mackenzie is a full-time physician. She has two gardens that she cares for, and then the rest of her time is focused on some of those broader investment pieces. We have three full-time garden coordinators and five part-time, as we're moving towards that. And those are people that are completely dedicated to Charlottesville City Schools. Community Engagement and Youth Leadership, I'm going to tell you more about that in a minute. And then one of our big things is, goals for the next year is to get health insurance for our staff, which we do not yet have, and benefits. I think I tell you that every year, but this year, we're going to do it. So, next slide. I mentioned about, this is Shannon, how we're working to bring that position into the school district, which is a really exciting movement. It mimics what is happening here at the high school, where Peter Davis is a full-time teacher here. He hosts six classes, and then he's also on staff with City School Yard Garden to help supplement the rigor and the amount of work that it really takes to keep a garden going. This is the chapter that we just shared with you, and I won't go, the, one of the main things I will say about the grants that we're looking to fund is to fund a farm-to-school coordinator position that can help Mr. Jones with all these initiatives that he's starting, that can do the ordering, that can do the promotion, those kinds of things. Next slide. And then, next week, we're taking a group of students, the Youth Food Justice interns, who have been working with us this summer, who came to present to you. They couldn't be here tonight because they're preparing for next week, where we're taking them to Savannah, Georgia, to present at a national conference on the work that they've done here. Their proposal was selected, and it's been a great honor for them to be able to share what their youth leadership has meant in terms of the city's initiative. So we'll be traveling with them next week. And I just wanted to share these two quotes. So Rodrigo, you met in-- wanted to share these two quotes. So Rodrigo, you met in August when we were here. And he was recent, he wrote the letter for our recent appeal that went out. One of his quotes was, "Since the first time he walked into the garden, the class was accepting and loving." And it's reflective of this quote from Tiana, who was a garden participant the very first year that we started. And I'll just let you, "I was just wandering the halls after my math tutoring, and I was ready to go, but then I saw tomatoes. Rachel, the garden teacher, had a pile of tomatoes in front of her. And the best part of it was that she let me eat one. Then next week, I went to the garden club. I'd never been in such a calm and positive environment before. There was freedom. I loved it, and I gained confidence." So it's just interesting to see the quotes 10 years apart of students who have engaged in the program. So to speak a little bit about our growing partners, those of you like Mr. Henderson, who have followed us throughout the years, knows that one of the first things we started was to change from a social service organization to a social change organization. So in addition to providing services, to teaching classes, we wanted to be an agent of change for systems change. And so we started looking at our values and aligning that way. And that taught us a lot about youth leadership and putting youth at the center of decision-making and having them drive the programming. That brought us to equity and racial equity. So in 2015, we did an intensive two-year racial equity training program with our board and staff to really make sure that our organization could challenge some of the traditional ways that nonprofits work and try to work differently. And that has brought us to advocacy in terms of how we engage in changing systems. And I might suggest that this is a very similar path that the school has taken itself in terms of growing into that kind of organization. And what that has meant for us is that a part of the food equity initiative that I mentioned looks at how we can build food equity, not only for youth, but for our community and these five core areas that affect any system, the food system. So transportation, getting to the grocery store, all of these issues. I won't go into each of them. But just so, to mention that healthy school foods was one of the priorities that a couple, as we talked with 300 neighbors in the community, healthy schools was one of the main things that they saw as a critical element to equity in our community. And so we came up with the report that we gave to, we talked with Dr. Atkins and Denise Johnson about, you know, what are the goals that the school has for food equity? And this profile, we had a profile for each of the city departments. We met with each of the departments, and they each developed a profile for how they could integrate food equity into their work. And so that is where we've become partners. We have found that being a partnership, working with City School Yard Garden at the individual level with students, working with the Urban Agricultural, you can go to the next one, with the Urban Agricultural Collective of Charlottesville, in the neighborhoods, growing food together in low-income and subsidized housing places, and then the Charlottesville Food Justice Network. So we're working at the personal, the neighborhood, and the systems level. And in the new year, we plan to launch our new name with, that is a broader umbrella for these three organizations. And we will become Cultivate Charlottesville. And we just wanted to say that, we wanted to reassure you that City Square Garden will remain a core part of that because that is, we feel that these other initiatives have only deepened the impact that we can have with students by being in the neighborhood with them. So for example, we have, we're taking care of the garden at City of Promise. And Mackenzie just did an after-school club activity there. And it's a way for the students to tie, just like the school district goes into the neighborhood when you want to have parent-teacher conferences, or when you want to make sure that everyone has equitable access. We're doing the same thing with the gardens. This is our equity framework that I just thought would be interesting for you to have on your files. And then our overall boilerplate that explains some of the reasons why we're joining, why we've launched this Cultivate Charlottesville Program Partners. I think that's it. Oh, these are some of our youth. They focus on that. We've shared this quote with you before. It's kind of our motivating quote. And so this is at the Friendship Court Farm that Aline mentioned. The students were digging up plants today because this farm will now be the site of development. So we'll be losing that spot. And they were saving some of those plants. So.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions for a City School Yard Garden, soon to become something else?
I think we're lucky to have you in our community.
Thank you.
Really. And this is an amazing report and presentation and all the information that you've put together. And, you know, you've done so much with the resources that you've had. And I hope you get health insurance for the staff.
Thank you.
But thank you for everything.
Thank you.
Thank you all for your work and your being in our schools and touching our children's lives so positively every day. So obviously, this board is very committed to City School Yard Garden, and we appreciate everything that you do for us. So, thank you.
Thank you for all of your work.
Those of you who haven't seen, thank you.
Take a picture of all of us holding up our.
You did a project with the 60th anniversary of the integration of the schools. And this is the sundial that they developed. We did receive a small grant to implement this. So we'll be putting one at the Buford School.
Nice.
And it has all the names of the Charlottesville 12. They designed it with Charles Alexander. He worked with them to design it. And so it was one of the leadership projects. Thank you for mentioning that. This is just the model that we used.
I love it. Great. Thank you. Appreciate your report. Okay, the next item on the agenda will be the adoption of the consent agenda.
Move for approval of the consent agenda?
I know that there was one discussion point. I didn't know if we wanted to, Lisa, did you want to talk about that? We can take that particular item out and, before we approve it?
Yeah, I just had some questions and wanted to talk a little bit about the new grant that we got. So we can, it's not that I don't approve it, or, but just had some questions. So I'm happy to.
This is the time.
Just ask.
Okay. So this specifically is about a targeted school improvement grant that we received. So this was just to get everybody else up to speed. It was $50,000 grant that was awarded to the schools. And the program is targeted for Buford. And just based on how it was described, can be used as tier one and/or tier two instruction. So I was just, had some questions. I don't know who I'm asking these questions to.
Specifically?
Dr. Atkins, okay. So I was just curious about, like, is every student being assessed or how students are being identified for that assessment? Where is the intervention happening? How's it going to be implemented? Is this money geared towards specific materials? Again, and just to get everybody in the audience up to speed, the description says the focus would be to help with, oh, I'm losing my place here, vocabulary and comprehension for the students. So those are just some of the questions. And then who implements it? Is it, you know, a push-in type of thing? And it may be too soon?
What we can do is give you a copy of the proposal that we wrote that was approved by the State Department of Education for how we expend the funds and then how the school actually uses the materials that they're purchasing, their research-based materials that they are purchasing in order to give students additional support in those areas in which they did not perform well on the SOLs. So it will be a combination of push-in, pull-out, all of that, whatever works best for the student, the individual students. So what we'd like to do is just give you a copy of the proposal that was written. And that may answer most of your questions when you see that. And then we'll be prepared to ask any additional questions that you might have.
Great. Thank you.
Are there any other questions on the consent agenda?
I have one little question.
The attendance, and it's only December, school year's still got a ways to go, but the yearly attendance, it looks like Buford is struggling a little bit with attendance, with sort of at-risk groups. Does anybody have any thoughts on that, or whether we need to be worried about that or target that?
Actually, that's a really good point to that. We do get an attendance report every single month on our consent agenda. And so that's a, thank you for bringing that up.
So right now, we don't. It could be because of sicknesses, illnesses. Sometimes they'll see a significant number of absences early on, and then you don't see those later. I don't know that we have ever had any of our schools not make the benchmark for attendance.
Yeah, there've been some that have been.
Yes. And we still have individuals who are working with families and students on attendance and being more proactive. The board remembers, we moved away from our attendance workers to a more proactive stance in helping to prevent or helping to mitigate those circumstances that cause students to miss school.
Yeah. When I think about it, the unusual thing about this report is that there's not more schools. Normally, in past years, there are more schools that were kind of down in the highlighted region of attendance. And now it's good that it seems to be going better for all the schools, except for, as I say, Buford had a few highlights, but.
I think the new model with being proactive with attendance is starting to take hold.
Great.
Yeah, I think it is something on, because when you mentioned that, I know two students, and they both have been out three days already.
Real illnesses.
Something, you know, some type of bug going on. They both go to Buford.
Any other comments or questions around the consent agenda?
A move for approval of the consent agenda?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. So now we're going to go to action items. So confused.
Good evening, Madam Chair, schoolroom members, and Dr. Atkins. Tonight, I am bringing forward policy JHCD, administering medicines to students. Last month, we were able to have discussion on this agenda draft, sorry, agenda draft, policy draft. And tonight, I will be presenting it for approval. The changes that were suggested have been included.
Thank you, Dr. King. Are there any questions for Dr. King? I will certainly be happy to entertain any action under this action item.
Move we approve?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Dr. King. The next item on the agenda is the school calendar. Mr. Henderson.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Atkins. Before you is a proposed 2020, 2021 draft calendar that was created in unison with Almar County. We met with them. And after the meeting, drew a draft. We've had it posted for several weeks. It is very similar to the 2019, 2020 calendar in terms of where things exactly landed with student holidays and professional learning days. We have not received as much feedback because I think the calendar is very similar to the calendar of this year, which was accepted quite readily with staff and parents. So here again, this is an informational item. We will continue having discussions with Almar County. But like I said, it's been posted and answer any of your questions.
Yes, Dr. Kraft?
So this has to do with, you know, the Jewish High Holidays and that there is, I guess, for the second year, Professional Learning Day scheduled for on the Jewish holiday of Yom Kippur. So in bringing this up, you know, I think, because I think some teachers and some people in the community might approach some of us about this. And I actually think that in our community, this is, I would just say, a reasonable compromise to, you know, I don't think we can completely work around this holiday. I wish we could. But I would ask that teachers who are of Jewish faith and observing this holiday be given access to the professional learning materials that others will be able to access on that day. So if there could be an effort made to do that, I think.
Absolutely.
That would be great.
No hesitation with that.
Thank you. And I, you know, and I appreciate Chrissy and Beth, you know, reaching out and actually asking about this. And, you know, so I do appreciate the effort that's been made.
Any other comments to Mr. Henderson? I just think February is very long. I'm very jealous of the folks in New York who have a whole week off in February. And yeah, I know that a lot of times, those days off, we end up having to go to school anyway that we used to have in February. So I understand the, and I just recognize it's a slog from Martin Luther King Day to the first.
Well, one of the reasons we did is that normally, the third week is usually a professional learning day. We moved it to March because we kept losing it. And our professional learning days are few. And so hoping that we will be able to get this in for our teachers.
That's a really great point. Appreciate you making that. Thank you. So do we need to approve this today or just for information?
No, this is just information. We'll bring it back.
Great. So this is open for comments. If you have any comments on the calendar, please let us know or let Mr. Henderson know about any comments you might have related to the calendar. And the next item is the budget development update. Ms. Powell?
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Atkins. It's that time of year again, Budget Eve, if you will. We'd like to take this time to kind of remind everyone of what this process will involve, that we're about to embark on, and also to give you a preview of some of the things that we know will be headline items as we work to establish the budget for fiscal year 2020, 2021. That's the first time I've said that out loud. And earlier, they were commenting on, that is a little bit awkward to say for some reason. To start with, it's just, I think, a good idea to remind everyone about the statutory guidance we're operating under when we, when the school board works with the superintendent to develop a needs-based budget. And so this slide just points to the section of the state code that provides that overarching direction that we operate under. So it is a needs-based, the school board is charged with developing a needs-based budget proposal. This next slide is just a friendly reminder of about a great study that was done back in 2014, 2015. Actually, it was published 2014. This link is still available to the public under, you just need to search on Charlottesville Blue Ribbon Commission on Sustainable. You can even just start, search Charlottesville City Blue Ribbon Commission for Education, any of that. It'll get you here. And what's really a testimony to the good work these folks did, I wasn't in Charlottesville at the time, but the fact that back then, they put forth that it is difficult to estimate the need year to year to address the funding gap, to address the need-based budget. But the number they put forth was, you can expect it to be somewhere between two and four million a year. And what you're going to see on this next slide is that we are anticipating our request based on needs and other circumstances to be closer to the high end of that range for the coming year. And this slide starts to give a preview of what's behind that and what are the driving factors. One of the big driving factors is the local composite index of ability to pay, which is a factor that's adjusted at the state level every two years. It has a number of different components, including how your, the value of the income for your residents, the value of the properties in your locality, your student population, your resident population. Every two years, the state takes this data from across the Commonwealth, and they measure how each locality moves, if you will, relative to every other locality in the Commonwealth. And then they use this factor throughout the budget to determine relative ability to pay. So the higher your local composite index, your LCI is, the higher your LCI is, and the highest it can be is a .8, then the more ability to pay for education is what the state determines that to be. So our index went up another couple, a few percentage points. And so we won't be able to clearly articulate what the impact of that is until we have our first budget proposal from the state to apply that to. But that is something we will have to contend with in this budget. It's not the first time that Charlottesville City has contended with an LCI increase because fortunately, this is a thriving community. And unfortunately, not every community in the Commonwealth has been so fortunate. The next piece that we know we are going to need to deal with, there's some major changes in the state funding methodology for special education, what we refer to as regional programs. I think the new term is. I think the new term is students who have intensive needs. And the way that the state is going to be funding services for those students is a process that's been changing, and the previews we've been given, those changes are significant, and it will decrease the state funding for Charlottesville to provide these services. Now, this is, there may be some opportunity for this situation to change or improve. I don't know if it's completely settled, or maybe there'll be some hold harmless funds available to help offset what's transpiring with the change in approach, but it's another unknown that, again, we're talking like hundreds of thousands of dollars of impact before we even start to talk about other needs. So those are some things we know we face upfront. And then, in addition to that, we know that health insurance costs are increasing. That's both a market phenomena and also just a function of our local population and claims and things like that. A lot goes into that, but we are anticipating a health insurance increase of some significance. And then the VRS pension rates are increasing again. We've enjoyed a holiday for a couple, few years. I hope you haven't missed that, but we actually, I know that we have to talk about VRS rate increase last year, and I don't think we did the prior year either, but it's back. So, and that, whenever markets start to fluctuate a little bit more, that's something else that you can anticipate. And then another kind of big-ticket item that we know will be revisiting again as we do every budget is our salary action. What is Charlottesville going to do to remain competitive or to become more competitive? The teacher shortage, especially in certain areas, that's not changing. To my knowledge, those statistics have not improved. So those are just, that's just a sneak peek at some of the things that we'll be grappling with as we move through the process of developing the next budget. So the budget timeline is summarized here. We've, November, of course, has now passed us, but that was, November's the first month where we start distributing materials, and we open up our K-12 enterprise system for all of our budget holders to start really working in their budgets. And that process continues somewhat into December, and the headline item for December were the two. One is we have our first actual starting work session to start digging into some data on December 18th. That's coming up this month. And then that, the first state budget proposal that we get our hands on also comes out in December. It's called the Governor's Budget Proposal, and I believe it's expected to be out the 17th. So we look forward to that. January, we are, we will be conducting our outreach sessions, which we do some very intentional things with PTOs around the city. We have our TAC Council, our Teacher Advisory Council that meets, and we discuss budget. We actually started discussing budget with them a little bit last month in November. We hold more School Board work sessions. We have our Saturday work session in January, and that's when the budget proposal really starts to take shape. February, there is the presentation of the superintendent's proposed budget, and there are additional School Board meetings and work sessions, and the process culminates with the adoption of the School Board proposed budget, and then it moves into the hands of the city and the city council for them to contemplate the funding in the March-April timeframe. And our budget, our detailed budget calendar is available on our website, so please reference that anytime you lose your place in the process, or if you'd like to come out to a meeting, that information's always available on our website. So a few more details about the internal workings of our budget development process. It really is incumbent on all of our budget holders to review the current year, you know, current year-to-date expenditures, and then they can see their entire prior year expenditures. They can see those details, and they develop a budget. Initially, they're charged with developing their budget proposal for next year just based on what they see in their actuals. And then any requests for additional funds are submitted on, through a budget request form, and every request for additional funding has to be connected with our strategic plan objectives. All requests are vetted by the superintendent's senior staff. When we look at costs, we tend to view them in categories. There's the non-discretionary items, and then there's, you know, we move from that into what are the more discretionary items. And we have logs and workbooks that we use to monitor services that we use year to year, software subscriptions, things like that, to discuss in detail, do we still use this? Is this still adding the value we expect? Can we eliminate this to get something else we want? The meetings that we have internally are very long, very detailed, and there's a lot that goes into that. This year, we also, and this happens every year, really, the health insurance plans are evaluated and potentially modified based on what we see going on in the marketplace and what we get as far as our initial actuarial renewal projections. That helps us determine if we need to go out to bid or not, and that almost sometimes feels like it's a separate process running parallel with the budget process, figuring out what to do with health insurance. That, little bit of juicy details of the behind-the-scenes workings, that's the last piece I have for today, but I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have at this time about the process or what's ahead.
And can you update the board about the CIP process and about the funding related to CIP, if you have any updates?
So what I've been advised from the person I work with most closely with CIP at the city, Michael Goddard, who comes and presents now about different school projects, our understanding is that the process is changing, but we're not, I'm not 100% sure where the city is in that process, to be honest. So unfortunately, I don't have more details. I did convey what I, you know, what I knew about our needs. I submitted information about track lighting, and then there's some other items like carpet replacements and a master key redo for the whole system in conjunction with where we're moving with access control. I submitted narratives and numbers for all those things, and general support for continuation of everything we've been doing, like the annual modernization, you know, work and the FIPSY work, all of that. So I did email, but I'm just not sure where that landed in the context of the broader process.
Right. My understanding is that we're going to have a meeting again with, like we've had in the past with CIP in a couple of weeks.
I think there are a lot of new players with some new ideas about how to move things forward there, and so I'm just not entirely sure yet where we'll integrate. But I did provide emails and written input as soon as I was flagged that there may be an opportunity to do so.
And we did meet with the city manager and the chair and the vice chair of city council to talk about that process. And the city manager is absolutely amenable to meeting with us and making sure that we're involved in that development process. So I know that they're working on dates and schedules right now for that. So we thank him for doing that.
And yes, so I just wanted to kind of make sure that the public was aware that certainly there are discussions, you know, that we're working on with the city about CIP and our needs. So thank you for also.
Yeah, we're always keeping it in mind, and of course, there's the larger projects that are being discussed. So we're all trying to move the ball, I think.
Right. So thank you for that, and also, are there any other questions about what?
Just a comment that I have, that, just for people to be aware of, that this year, you know, our School Board members will be attending city council work sessions, and so I think more than we have in the past, so I think it's really, it's a really great idea for us to be sitting in and observing those sessions and just trying to get a sense of their conversations related to their budget and their priorities, and to be in the room. So I'm really glad we're doing that.
We're definitely asking, I mean, just as a board, we're asking the city council to support getting us to 100% with respect to reconfiguration design work, and that's why, one of the reasons that we are just wanting to be in the room, as Hamilton would have us be, but just be in the room to talk about these larger projects. And so if there are questions that people have around reconfiguration, you know, certainly one of the board members would be happy to answer your questions, but we are asking that there be a placeholder in the next budget cycle for completing the design work on reconfiguration.
One thing I just thought of as you were talking, one of the other things that the city has done is they actually, the city manager and some of his staff members, and he has some newer staff members, came and met with us in our office so we could talk with them in as much detail as they wanted to about our budget process and financial controls, and so we've, I don't want to say we've gotten that out of the way, because it certainly can be an ongoing discussion, but it seemed like we covered, we covered whatever they wanted to cover. We provided a lot of information, answered all, you know, all questions that were asked, and I felt like that was a good thing to get done before we embark in this new budget development process. So I really credit Dr. Atkins for initiating that, and I don't know if you were aware that we've done that.
Right. Yeah, and there are a lot of new players, like you said, so I definitely think that while there hasn't been front and center like our CIP requests, it certainly is going to be in the coming months, something that gets much more discussion. Any other questions for Ms. Powell? Yes, Ms. Torres?
Thank you.
Wait, Ms. Torres?
One quick question. Sorry, whether you can speak or Dr. Atkins can speak a little bit more just to the impact of the proposed special ed funding changes, like how, is that prep? We're talking that type of regional change that we've been talking about a little bit, but how potentially would we feel that impact here in CCS?
If you would give us time, we have a meeting with the state superintendent on December the 13th, not just Charlottesville, but other school divisions who are part of the Piedmont Regional Education Program, that will be talking about the impact that the new model, funding model could have on our programs. And now each individual school is taking a look at how much we invest in prep, and can we continue to provide the same level of services using a different approach? So we're in constant conversation at all of the school members who are in prep, that would be Green, Culpeper, Fluvana, Orange, Louisa, Nelson, and Madison, and Albemarle. So we're running many different scenarios to try to determine what's going to be the best model for our individual school division, and then collectively for all of the school divisions. So if you would give me just a little more time, we've had numerous meetings with the finance department from the state. Some of it is unclear right now. I think a lot of it is in development at the state level, and so each time they give us a new model or a tweaked model, we run those numbers. So just give us a little bit more time, and we will be coming back with you to give a full report.
And if people wanted to advocate around this issue, I think what we're asking is the state to provide, to hold us harmless.
Yeah.
In these changes. Is that accurate?
One of the things that we discussed today, and Kim, I was talking to some of the other school divisions, we need to define hold harmless.
Fair enough.
Because right now, we don't know what hold harmless means.
Yeah.
Because the whole reimbursement structure has changed so dramatically, we need to determine what is hold harmless.
Fair enough. Again, thank you again for all your work and advocacy at all levels to try to get this moving forward. Okay, so the next item on our agenda is this annual special education student count. It's a board response to written reports. Are there any responses to the written report?
Yes, when I look at it, I'm always impressed with, as a public school, we take all comers. And you look at the numbers here and the challenges that some of the students face, and that they present challenges to the school system that we welcome, and diversity is our strength, but it obviously presents challenges, and that's why we need to continue to work hard on every child and to reach their potential. And anyway, I think it's an impressive number to me, that we're helping all these kids with all these different kinds of struggles.
Any other questions, responses?
Madam Chair, please. Just out of curiosity, in looking at this, and maybe this is intuitive, and I've missed it, but when you're looking at the different definitions of disabilities with, and I'm assuming those come by, from the VDOE, but specifically when you're looking at developmentally delayed, and you're looking at the numbers, and I was looking at them by school division. So they show up all the way in all the elementary schools, and then there's nothing there at Walker, Buford, CHS. So is that just based on age, or at that point, is it that they're going to another school setting that might serve them better?
As a classroom teacher, for developmentally delayed students, during the time that I was a classroom teacher, we referred to them as non-categorical students, and they came into us at five years old and could stay in the program under that heading up to eight years old. So there has always been a cutoff as to how long they can stay under that umbrella, and it is still, is it eight?
Yes.
It's still that cutoff. By age eight, we have to have an eligibility meeting to make a determination as to which handicapping condition the student may or may not qualify for. It doesn't mean that we will not be providing services if that is warranted. It means that then we move the student from the developmentally delayed category into a more specific disability.
So a student who is in that category, that doesn't necessarily, I mean, would they have an IEP at that age?
Absolutely.
With that, and then that IEP changes?
Yes.
I mean, based on that next eligibility meeting?
I have known many students who, after they've completed, reached the cutoff for the developmentally delayed program or the non-categorical program, previously, they exit the program completely. Because there were some developmental delays, milestones that the students did not reach, but with the adequate support, the school system was able to help the students reach those milestones, and then the student can set off and have more success without having a special education categorical label.
So, and there are benefits then, I mean, for, say, a kindergartner who comes in, who is having some struggles and is identified, and that is the category that they are put into to receive those specific interventions? But when we, I mean, I know we would want to be providing those interventions and supports whether or not they are in that category or not.
Yes, there are students that we, we would provide those supports regardless of whether they're in that category. However, there are some students who come in that the delays that they have are significant, warranting an eligibility, a child study, leading to an eligibility, being found eligible for developmentally delayed program, and the services that come along with that. So that's how the student actually gets into the program. But any student who comes in will provide, I mean, supports that they need in order to reach those milestones. This group of students have more significant delays that need a more intensive approach.
And I would like to just remind, also, our preschool-age students, oftentimes, we get referrals, we do child study for our students who have not reached the age of five, and not just our students who are pre-kindergartners in our schools, but also within the community. So all throughout the year, we are working with our families, be it that they're in school or not, that may, if they're identified prior to that, in that age group, even if it's after kindergarten, which is, it still happens after kindergarten and on before age eight, but the majority of the eligibility, the child funded eligibility meetings occur in that preschool age category for DD.
Yeah, I just find this very intriguing, because this is one of those situations where, I mean, as a parent, it might be a little traumatic to hear this, that your child is in this category, and then to weigh the benefits of, you know, but potentially, we can really target or give extra interventions that are going to help them rise, but at the same time, I mean, again, and so many of the diagnoses are, you know, are tough. I mean, there's such a spectrum.
It is.
Anyway.
And we give the students who may not continue on in special education, we still give them targeted supports as warranted, as they need those targeted supports, but we give it to them without having to categorize them as a special education student. So we still have the services. I have had many students who left at age eight. So we still have the services. I have had many students who left at age eight, left the program and went successfully into a second grade classroom after being in the program since preschool all the way up to eight and then transitions very successfully into a second grade classroom. One student that really sticks out and in my mind, went on college and is a pharmacist now, very successful. So some of our students are incredibly successful. It just takes that little time and support to get them to that place that they can handle the generic curriculum.
Thank you. Thank you for the conversation.
Okay, thank you, Dr. King and Dr. Atkins. We're going to move on to the comments from members of the community. I have two members signed up. Irene Peterson?
Excellent.
Excellent. And Bridget Groff. So we have, you have three minutes, I guess, so.
Yeah, we can each one three.
Okay.
Hi, good evening. My name is Bridget Groff, and I have three children in Charlottesville City Schools, two of whom receive special education services. And I have the privilege tonight of presenting some concerns and recommendations from the Special Education Advisory Committee, which is also known as the SEAC, so I'll use that terminology. And I think people have received this report. Is that correct? Okay. So I'll just highlight a few things. On behalf of myself and the committee and the other parents here, I do want to say a special thank you to the many hardworking teachers and aides and transportation workers and nurses who support these children. It is so appreciated from a parent's standpoint. So the objectives of our committee, as defined by the Virginia DOE, include providing advice concerning unmet needs in the education of children with disabilities and assisting in the development and priorities of strategies for meeting these identified needs. I've been attending the SEAC meetings for about a year and a half, and so this report is a compilation of kind of the most common parent concerns that we revisit at every meeting. So I'll start with the first one. Our number one concern, or not number one, but a really important concern is that parents and caregivers are not provided with adequate information or resources throughout the identification and the IEP process. This leaves parents and caregivers, and I can speak from personal experience, feeling very vulnerable, uninformed, overwhelmed, and not able to sufficiently participate in the process and advocate for their child. It is very overwhelming to have a child who needs special support and to feel like you are not able to participate successfully because you don't understand the process is very frustrating. I think this could be solved very simply with a district-wide one-page reference sheet for all families entering this process, as well as an annual reference sheet for all families whose children are currently receiving services. For families new to the process, this should include a map or a timeline of the process and kind of what to expect at the meetings, a contact person for their child's case, information about this committee, the SEAC, and the meeting dates. And then I also included some links there. It is amazing to me that I've had a child with an IP for four years and for two years, and at every meeting or every community event I attend, I learn something new that I should have learned two, three, or four years ago. Most recently, just found out about the Parents' Guide to Special Education from the Virginia DOE. And it's amazing to me that I had never heard about this before, considering how much I try to educate myself and kind of pour myself into involving myself and my husband in our kids' education. So for anyone continuing the IEP process, they should just have a sheet that also includes their caseworker, information about the SEAC, but also there's some great resources on understood.org that just walk parents through what to expect at these meetings. There's little checklists. It would be so helpful if this was distributed to every parent, not just the people that are showing up at the meetings. Second concern is the small attendance and lack of representation at the SEAC meetings. This committee meets four times a year, and we really need committed representatives from each school identified either by parent interest or by the special education team. I also have the privilege of being on the gifted advisory committee, and the meetings are very different. At the SEAC meetings, we usually have parents from one or two schools only, and we usually have no representation from any special education teachers or staff at these meetings, which is really disappointing compared to the gifted advisory meetings, which have parents from every school as well as multiple staff members involved. So in order to really create effective change and improve outcomes, I really think we need representation from all stakeholders. So our suggestion is to appoint one to two parents from each school that will really commit to attending these meetings. And then also to appoint a member of the special education staff from each school to attend the meetings, to report back to their team, so that we have a more open dialogue. Sorry.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Hi. My name is Irene Peterson, and I'm a parent of a child with a disability. I have been navigating the Charlottesville City School Special Education System for over five years, and now my kid now is a third grader at Bunny Moran. During this time, during my journey of being part of the SEAC as a parent or a co-chair, and recently as a chair of the committee. The other two concerns that we have is, my first one is about inclusion. Students learn best if they're in the less restricted environment, and often that is in the general education classroom. At Charlottesville City School, 57% of students with disabilities spend the majority of their day in a general classroom, general education classroom. And in my experience, my personal experience, that has a lot between teachers. So my kid until last year was pretty much included for 15 minutes a day. This year, we had like awesome experience, and because the general ed teacher also has a background in special ed. So he went from barely included to almost fully included. And, you know, we feel very fortunate, but I don't think this should be like a lucky thing that we got this teacher. Should be like the standard from every year. And the thing that we're suggesting is that we have a little bit more special education background or professional development for the general ed teachers, so they're better prepared to be handling everything that these kids need in this classroom. So the idea that we have a teacher lead per classroom, doesn't need to be every single teacher, but at least one per grade, they have to have a little bit more background in special ed so they can help the other teachers. And the other concern that we have is that when we look at the graduation of kids with IP, only less than half of them get, are able to get a high school diploma. And this is less than the state requirements or the state targets. And, you know, we're wondering if there is a way that we can look to see how we can improve that, because the odds are against our kids. And if there is a way to improve their chances of graduates from high school, I think. And so we just appreciate all the work that special ed teachers do for kids. I mean, being a teacher is a lot of hard work. I cannot imagine being a special teacher. So I really appreciate what they do for us. And I just, this time, what I know, there's a lot of concerns about cutting funds, if you can make sure that we can get what our kids deserve in special ed. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Are there any other community members who would like to have an opportunity to speak at this time? You have three minutes. Please state your name and address.
Good evening. My name is LaShonda Lisa Morseberger, and I wanted to follow up to comments earlier in the evening about compensating teachers who are working during their planning periods because of the lack of substitutes or the substitute shortage. And just to add to that, that I had heard from several community members and parents of students, particularly in the middle schools, that were very much in support of that. And so I just wanted to add my voice to that, just to say that it seems like a very big concern in the community, and I know it's weighing on teacher morale, and the money is already there to pay substitutes who would come in. So if they're not coming in, we should be compensating teachers who are working during their planning periods. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so the next item on the agenda, I'm sorry, are there any other public, community members who would like the opportunity to speak at this time? Great. Okay. Thank you to all those who did come and speak. Right now, we're going to go to comments from the board. And I'm going to start with Ms. Torres.
I'd like to keep it fresh. Fresh. Keep us on our toes. Thank you, and thank you to all the community members who have made contact, comments, and come up tonight. So always appreciate that. Thank you to our new school board rep.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Things to do.
Absolutely. So quickly, just some things that I have participated in. As Mr. Bryant did the month prior, I was able to be present for the WINA interview last month, so that's always fun. We all, I think, pretty much attended the legislative meeting at K-Tech with Senator Deeds and with delegate-elect Hudson. So that was a wonderful opportunity to sit and meet with them and talk about priorities for this next year. Attended the SEAC meeting at Johnson, and there was a great presentation from PTC, who is, which stands for, Oh Parent, Help Me Out People, Parent Educational Advocacy Training Center. So it was a wonderful presentation, and again, learned about some of the resources that the ladies who spoke just a little bit ago shared. So again, a wonderful opportunity. And I believe our next meeting, I don't remember where that's at.
Jackson Villa.
Jackson Villa, thank you. Attended the early childhood policy convening this last week, which several of us did, and I'm sure Dr. Atkins will have more to share about that, our annual VSBA conference. And attended some great sessions, and I'm not going to go into them in too much detail, but there was one, I think, number one, we're doing a great job as far as, what's it called? Measuring What Matters. And it was a session that talked about basically putting out an annual report and how they do that through media and gathering stories from students and what the school's doing, and then presenting that at the end of the year. I think we do a great job with our newsletters and our updates already, but I did grab some extra handouts to share with Beth and Chrissy so that they could take a look at that. I mean, it was just really impressive. And I believe that was from Alexandria City Public Schools. And, you know, they kind of get bombarded with the news media and the big newspapers up there and often run with storylines that might not be so positive. So this was an opportunity for them, and they just did a nice job showing how they've taken the great things that they are doing throughout the year and through the students and the programs that they're implementing and really then shining with this annual report. So that was impressive and I think really worthwhile to take a look at. Another session that I attended was kind of a joint session through proximity learning, which is an online learning platform that is used, I think, in lots of different school divisions. We've used it for foreign language, support for American Sign Language for my daughter. So very grateful for that. The challenge, my challenge to us is to have a conversation, because we tried to find an instructor to hire here onsite so that we could have a full class. And I know there's enough students out there to fill at least one, if not two, sections of American Sign Language, but we couldn't find the teacher. So my daughter's been doing this alone, online, and has a tutor that comes in to help her. And so that's been great, and she's succeeding at that. But proximity learning also has a synchronous model, where they basically will Skype in an ASL instructor, and you have somebody in the classroom who's monitoring. So you can have a full class where they're interacting and learning. And I think, again, I would challenge and I would love for us to take a look at that, to see, again, because I know there have been two or three students who have seen my daughter taking this, who wanted to take it, but we just didn't have the right model set up. So I did grab some information and literature on that. And then also with that, they partner with ESS, and I believe I spoke to briefly Dr. Atkins, and this was a group that is providing substitute teachers, a substitute teacher pool. So I did gather some information on that, and I'm happy to pass that on, so we can look at that as an option or a possible solution or partial, partial solution to address some of the substitute teacher needs that we're looking at. And I'm going to just say that's it for now. So thank you.
Mr. Wade?
Yes, I just have one thing that I wanted to mention, and that is Buford School and Bradley School, they did a basketball fundraiser earlier this week, and they were able to collect over 2,000 pounds of food for the food bank. It's really something that's been going on for a few years now, and I want to thank Andy Jones and Dr. Turner and Harold Board with the county for pulling that together. It was really, I wasn't able to attend, but I just heard great things about it. And mainly during this time of the year, they were able to collect a lot of food for the food bank.
Thank you, Mr. Wade. Ms. Perry?
I just want to say thank you to all of the people from both divisions, Charlottesville and Albemarle, that participated in our first annual 5K Walk One for the Public Education Foundation. It was a little nippy that morning, but we had a great turnout, and this is the first of many to come. And a special thanks to Chrissy Vick for all that she did to send out information. And we are going to be doing it again next year, and it's going to be expanded. And Dr. Atkins and Chrissy, I took copious notes, and I will share them probably after the holiday, because we might be a little busy before then. And secondly, another event is coming up on Saturday, and it is a fundraiser for the City of Promise. The Free Union Band is going to be performing at the Southern, but their band that comes up before, which they call a cover band, if you all are familiar with entertainment lingo, is called Sputnik. And they are a group of students, and they have decided that, and they negotiated with the Southern, to donate all a portion of the proceeds to City of Promise because of the positive things that City of Promise are doing for those students that are in the neighborhood, i.e. the footprint. And some of the footprint students are in the band. So if you go to thesouthernseville.com and look on their event page, you will see the event. So we're hoping that you will be willing to come out. And if you are, great. If you can't, you can always go to our website, City of Promise, and click D-O-N-A-T-E.
Dr. Kraft?
Thank you. Just a few things. First of all, I would like to advocate for lights in our annex at CHS here, that we, I guess this is something controlled by the city, and we have groups and committees meeting in the evening, and we are not always successful in getting the lights turned on because we don't have control. So it seems to me that it would be really important to be able to turn on and off the lights ourselves. I think we can handle that. And so I don't know what we have to do to make that happen, but, you know, for example, Ms. Catlin, on Monday, put in the appropriate, she said she had put in the requests to wherever they go, to have the lights on for our gifted ed advisory group, and it just didn't happen. So I'm hoping that we can change this so we have local control over the lights. That would be one thing. I'd like to give a shout out I'd like to give a shout out to Velvet Coleman and our family engagement team for the Parent University, that they put on, I guess it was two or three, I don't even know, a couple of weeks ago, but at Jackson Villa. It was really impressive, the resources that they pulled together, the sort of little mini-classes for parents, and lots of agencies from the community coming in and exhibiting. And, you know, it was a wonderful thing. They provided childcare and transportation and everything you could imagine, and even a table on vaping from the School Health Advisory Board, and I was really happy to see that. I thought they did a wonderful job. I'd like to also make one other request, that we have some kind of regular update on the reconfiguration process here at our board meetings, just so that we, we and the community are kept up to date on what's going on and the pace of what's going on. And I know we don't have control over all aspects of this, but I think people are really wanting to know what we're doing and where the process is, so I'm hoping that we can add that on to our agenda. And one other thing, we have received some feedback from the community about the nature of our board comments, and that maybe for some, they're not so useful, for maybe for some, they go on and on too long, I don't know. But I'm just asking that we, I would love for us to hear what is most useful. What do you want to hear from us in our board comments? And what isn't so useful? So if we could get some feedback from the community, I think that would be really helpful to us. And, you know, hopefully, you know how to reach us, so we would just really appreciate that. And finally, I know I'm not supposed to say this, but I would like to express my appreciation to Ned for, you know, it was our good fortune to have him fill in in this interim capacity, and we just benefit so much from his wisdom, his institutional memory, his attention to detail, his sense of humor, lots of things. So, I know, I had to do it, Ned, I'm sorry, he doesn't like this, but I, thank you very much. And you will be missed, and I hope that you will not go far.
Still got another meeting with me, unless you're not letting me come.
You can come, you just won't get a little far or standing over.
We're on TV now, so this is why.
We've already celebrated Ned's departure before, so.
He already departed. We had a big thing for Ned, so.
Mr. Bryant?
I would like to thank each and every one of you all who came out to tonight's meeting, and for those of you who spoke during the comment section, your concerns are well taken and will be certainly taken under advisement. Also, I attended the school board conference along with the rest of the board members, and I sort of made my way through the various sessions. And the one that stood out was the same one that Lisa mentioned, Measuring What Matters. One of the things that they mentioned in the workshop was that they didn't always have a good relationship, the City of Alexandria, with the media, so they sort of took matters in their own hands. And they said, in order to do that, they had to control the narrative, in terms of what was going on with the school system, because there were a lot of misconceptions about the school system in Alexandria, that it was in a rich city, but a lot of the same issues that we have, they have in the Alexandria public schools. So they're saying, when you put out the information, have it more interactive. So when people in the community go to the website, they can actually not just read a lot of stuff, but also there are videos that they included, video clips as well to make it more interactive. And I thought it was a great idea. Also, we met with Senator Deeds and Sally Hudson to discuss the upcoming legislative actions that will certainly impact the public schools. I've been torn as to whether I want to say this publicly or not, but I am going to say it publicly, because as I was making my rounds in the conference, I had an opportunity to go up and speak to the presenters at the end of the presentations. And when I introduced myself, and I said I was a school board member with the Charlottesville City Schools, people lit up. Literally, the body language suddenly changed. And I'm going to focus my attention on to Dr. Atkins, because one of the things that I heard at the school board conference is that you are revered in this Commonwealth. People admire you, the work, and you have a name, you're known as the Dean of Superintendents. That's what they call you, the Dean of Superintendents. And it was an honor to be a part of a board, and to be a part, to have a superintendent of your caliber leading the charge. And they said to me, said, anybody who's seeking out a mentor needs to seek out Dr. Atkins. And I want you to know that you are loved and revered across this Commonwealth. And I felt very, very proud.
Thank you, Mr. Bryant.
And honored.
Thank you so much.
To be a part of this organization.
I appreciate that. It's probably because I've been around so darn long.
Well, you are the dean.
Yeah. And I will apologize to our audience, I have, I think, some of staff gave me their cold. So I think it was multiple staff members have shared their cold with me.
Well, that's, you work closely together.
Well, that shows how closely you work and how much they revere you. They don't want to be sick alone.
Mr. McKee?
And I must point out that, again, in my, as I did in my last, last public comments, that the best thing I ever did was be on the board that hired Dr. Atkins, and that's certainly my lasting legacy.
Thank you.
As far as meetings, it was the same ones that people have heard about, at the VSBA Conference, which is always worthwhile, and I hope you all continue to go to enforce as we have in the past, because it really is a great opportunity to learn new things and to see what other people are doing and to network with people, and so it's money well spent. And one of the things you always see there is a bunch of pictures of brand-new schools and modernized schools.
You've got to speak into the mic. It's really hard to hear you, Ned.
What's that?
It's really hard to hear you.
You're acting like you want to be heard.
I mean, this is where I really want you to be heard.
Nothing else, until now. And you see, you go, and they have nice pictures of the new schools that are being built around, and you look at the names of the schools and their counties that don't have as much assets as we do, and we just need to get this done as a community, to get this reconfiguration done. And I agree with Ms. Kraft that we, and it's been a time period doing this, putting this RFP together, that I think it's understandable, we haven't been hearing that much, and there's not much to hear, but I think the more gets talked about, the better, and I think it really ought to be a regular thing on the agenda. Even if there's not much to say about it, it keeps it in the public eye that this is a big deal, because it is a big deal, it's going to be a heavy lift for the community to do what needs to be done, but all the communities around us have done it. And we haven't had a new school since 1974, and we just need to do this. And the reconfiguration we're talking about right now is just Walker Buford, and that's going to be a big, big deal. Our elementary schools all need modernizing too, and that needs to be a phase two, and we need to keep that in the public eye, too, that, that, that's, these are things that needs to, need to happen. And I focused my time at the convention, going to ones about construction, and there was a couple of them about energy savings, and that you can, there's some schools that have been built that are zero net energy, and a lot of it has to do with the way the school is built. Not, not just putting up a huge array of solar panels, even though that's great, but just the way a construction takes place makes a big difference in installation and that sort of thing. Anyway, I hope to pass those things along. Some of the school systems get solar panels by entering into a contract with some solar companies, where you're essentially paying them your electric bill, and they supply all the panels for free, and your electric bill's essentially the same as it would be anyway, so you get these electric panels for free, these solar panels for free. And anyway, there was some interesting stuff and learned a lot. Thanks for letting me go, thanks for letting me be on the board.
And thank you, Ned. Honestly, your experience around capital improvements and reconfiguration, and just your historical knowledge has served this board very well over this past year, so thank you very much for stepping up and for not stepping up further, so. Continuing to leave the door open for new, new people to come on the board.
Oh, yeah.
So I just want to, I have a couple of items that I wanted to kind of mention, not, I think what we have been working on is related to substitutes, it's definitely something that we have been hearing about and working on, and I just, I think we are working on it, and we're going to continue to work on it, so thank you to all of those who brought that to our attention, or continue to bring that to our attention. I think it's obviously really important for morale, but also, well, just morale, frankly, that's enough of a reason. And, because we, we ask a lot of our teachers, and to, you know, I recognize how difficult it is to also then take up your planning period to substitute. So we're, we definitely are taking suggestions and application, applications for substitutes. And, yeah, so that's, other issue, other items that we've been working on, we do think that very soon the RFP will come out with respect to reconfiguration. I don't know what day is, but today, definitely within the next two weeks, I expect before Christmas that RFP will come out, based on our conversations with the city. And, let's see, I had like a whole list of things I wanted to mention, but as usual. I also went to the chamber dinner, where we got to honor one of our other school board members, and I just am so thankful that I was able to attend, because I think Mr. Wade just does such an, is such an asset to our community, not just on the board, but just, I mean, everything that the principals came and talked to us about with respect to their program of study and the mentoring. I mean, like, Mr. Wade just lives that ideal, and he has always asked us to do more mentoring, but, and he personally does so much of it, and it's really heartening for me to see our program of study and our principals really embracing those principal, those ideals as well. And so thank you for, A, your service to our board, but, and to the chamber for recognizing the good work that you do, and I'm just so grateful to know you, so thank you, Mr. Wade.
Brother's touch.
We recognize you in the newspaper. We know you in the street.
I think along with the light issue, it's also, the video feed has also been problematic, so again, these are just things that I think with respect to, kind of similar conversations, we have obviously been having a lot of conversations with the city, and these are just other things that kind of need to get on the burner, as well as just making sure the video feed works, making sure the lighting situation is good. But again, we have been working really closely with the city on a lot of issues, so, and they are quite, a lot of them are very, very new as well, so just all trying to be really patient and work with them, and as we move forward, so cooperatively. So I think that's all I have at the moment. And so the next thing on our agenda is superintendent's comments.
Thank you, Ms. McKeever. I'm going to, the first slide in my comments, I'm going to pass over to Ms. Peria.
Thank you, Doc, thank you, Dr. Atkins. As we have been discussing over the past several months, we have been talking about equity, and we've been talking about the difficult conversations. And everyone around the table attended our annual VSBA conference. And this year, the focus was equity in various shapes, forms, and fashions. And our current executive director of the Virginia School Board Association, Ms. Gina Patterson, took on the courageous conversations. She opened with one of our own, Dr. Lou Val Brown, who spoke passionately about equity and implicit bias. She never wavered as it related to this courageous conversation. Regardless of the backlash from any in attendance, regardless of backlash from any on her board, she stood strong. And I, as well as the rest of the board, wanted to take this opportunity to acknowledge our state executive for taking on the courageous conversation, equity. Thank you, Mrs. Patterson.
All right, thank you, Ms. Peria. I'd also echo that, thank you to Gina Patterson for making sure that equity stayed front and center at the level of the school board. We really appreciate your, your focus and your determination to have these courageous conversations, it was very meaningful. Dr. I, when he did his presentation, talked about the progress of our Avid students. I'd like everyone to know that this year, we have, 33 of our Avid students are seniors, and at the high school, there are 27 of those 33 students have already received acceptance letters from colleges and universities, representing about 84% of the students and the seniors in the Avid program. Our performance got the attention of the National Avid Organization, and the high school has received commendations in three different areas for Avid students' performance. Our students in the graduating class of 2019, 94% of the Avid students actually completed a FAFSA form, in comparison to 61% of the students nationally. At our high school also, 97% of that graduating class, 2019, 97% of the Avid students applied to a four-year college or university. And 85% of that 97% were actually accepted in a four-year institution. Nationally, about 81% apply or aspire to go off to receive a bachelor's degree, and then less than 50% of that group actually attend. So you can see that our students at Charlottesville High School are percentage-wise, they are leading the way, not only in Virginia, but across the nation in their quest for post-secondary education. So congratulations to all of our teachers and staff at the high school, and to our administrators in the program, and to Dr. I for doing an exceptional job, making sure that the group of Avid students continue beyond high school. This year, here are some pictures of our students who have already received their acceptance letters, the 84, the 27 students, or 84% of the students have already received acceptance letters. And it's just a joy to be able to show their pictures and show them holding their acceptance letters. And these are early acceptances, which is pretty impressive, so there are many more to come. I'd like to thank the board members who attended the Early Childhood Policy Convening Session at the Jefferson School. It was a collaboration between the Early Childhood Funders Network, Early Childhood Education Task Force, and the United Way of Greater Charlottesville. They hosted this panel, and there were some key members of our community and broader community who were in the audience to hear about policy, to hear about current efforts and partnerships with the University of Virginia, and research, and boots on the ground in our school division and in Albemarle work that's going on around early childhood education. We all know. We all know that a strong investment at the beginning of a student's educational career gives us a strong, a higher likelihood that the students will be successful beyond high school. So thank you to all of our community members who were there, and thank you to each one of them and the role that they play in making sure that our students are well-prepared early on for the academic rigors that will face them. And thank you to all of our community members for your suggestions. Our Special Education Advisory Committee, thank you so much for the suggestions that you've made. We always look forward to wanting to improve our processes, and so to hear that kind of feedback helps us to have specific targets that we can work on to make that process a better process for not only our students, but also for families. So thank you, and thank you to everyone for your comments. Substitute teachers, we are working on those diligently. HR has been working nonstop on, and we did add some substitutes to the pool in the personnel agenda tonight. So thank you to Miss Co. Clemens for all that you're doing right now to make sure that we get that pool as deep as possible, and certainly those other comments about how we might recognize the work that our teachers are doing to cover those classes, that's important also. So thank you, Ms. McKeever.
Thank you. So the work session wrap-up, Dr. King, is there anything?
There were two items, one, the targeted supports report, targeted assistance and supports, and the other was reconfigure, reconfiguration update in the school board agendas for the future months.
Great. So upcoming meetings, I have a little bit of a list of them because of the budget season. December 18th is the, we're having a school board budget work session at 4:00 at K-Tech. Then on January 9th, it's a regular school board meeting at 5:00. And so that's, I think, a week later than normal because of the holiday, so just be aware of that. January 25th, we're having another school board work session at 8:30 a.m. at Walker, and then.
It's a Saturday.
That is a Saturday. And then on January 28th, we're having a work session slash meeting, budget discussion with the city council at 6:00 p.m. at K-Tech on January 28th. Then our next meeting will be February 6th at here, and then February 11th, another work session at 4:00 at K-Tech, and then February 20th is the approval of the budget at 5:00 p.m. here on February 20th, which is typically the third Thursday, I think, of that, when, anyway, February 20th at 5:00. So that's what I have for upcoming meetings, and hearing no objection, we stand adjourned.
Into closed session.
And we're going into closed session. Don't forget your sweet potato.